And all sorts of things about the moon and I grew up East Texas. Everybody over there goes and looks at the moon.
My wife says, "I believe in God. I don't believe in the moon." And I said, "Hell, yeah, that's right, bud."
Welcome to everybody this morning. Thank you all for coming. Now, call the meeting order. Ask that you stay up for the opening prayer and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. She'll be you want to do the prayer this morning.
Happy Father, we thank you for this day and every day you give us. You know our needs and you know that we are always grateful for what we receive. We ask that you be with our troops and everybody here in the county and every day.
Amen.
Amen.
Let the allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has anybody signed up?
No, sir.
To speak? I'm getting discouraged. I don't think our people care about our government anymore. Nobody's signing up to speak?
Maybe you're doing everything right.
Well, I don't know. It's kind of hard to believe, but hopefully I'll hold over there. Thank you. Out of six on the agenda, discuss, approve, disprove, Texas Department of Agriculture Texans Feeding Texans, Home Delivered Meal Grant Program with me signing the resolution on behalf of the county. And that's presented by Deike, and I hate to pronounce the name because I'm probably saying it wrong. D-E-I-K-E? Deike or?
It's Deike.
Deike, I'm sorry. I should have asked before the meeting started when you came in. Okay, if you will, go ahead and make your presentation.
Thank you, sir.
The front page of the handout that I gave you is our monthly report. And we track it by month. So on the second page, Karnes County is listed. And it's actually a total report of all the meals that we serve in Karnes County. The column over to the right is the Texans Feeding Texans Home Delivered Meals. So far this year, 2,380 meals. We operate this program out of our Kennedy office at 485 North Sunset Strip. And so the meals are prepared there daily. We deliver meals, fresh cooked meals daily unless there's holiday and so on. But we provide for that alternate meal for the client. This grant does require match from each of our six counties. And it's based on population numbers of elderly based on the last census. So our request is for Karnes County to continue with this match, to continue serving elderly clients here in Karnes County.
And how much may does it take to make the match? I assume there's an amount that, at least one we did last year.
Yes, sir.
It's $779.25.
Yes, sir.
Seven hundred? And that was the part that Karnes County paid?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and it'll be the same this year or does it vary? Does it change?
It probably will not change until the next census because it's based on census. So each year the request is the same.
Is it the same? Does it just change every 10 years then?
Unless there's a change in the formula or change house state request that we ask for the match.
All right. Thank you. Is that everything that you would report to us?
Yes, sir.
I've not heard this report before, so I'm not sure.
Yes, sir. I believe on this. And I do have an announcement about other programs if I can do that.
Sure.
Out of our Kennedy office, we also have community services, which we provide utility assistance to low income clients. We can assist them with their electric, gas, or propane bills. And we have an abundance of money this year. So we're looking for clients to come in and request the service. So if you have clients in your precinct or in your county that have this need, please refer them. We also do case management to transition people out of poverty. And we do that intake at the time they come in for utility assistance. And then also in our Karnes County office in Kennedy, we have the WIC program where we're providing services to women, their infant, and children.
Where is the office?
It's at 485 North Sunset Strip, just as you come into Kennedy.
And I assume there's some kind of sign or something on it that identifies it?
Yes, sir. And if it hasn't been installed yet, the sign will look like my business card. It'll have the Community Action Partnership, Community Council of South Central Texas on the building.
Okay. Do you need anything from us as a body today?
Just the approval of the just the approval for the Texans Feeding Texans if you also choose.
Okay. The approval to continue with the same program that we had is what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. I didn't talk with you earlier.
That's perfect.
And understand better, but
That's perfect.
Okay. Is there a motion to continue this program in Karnes County?
So made.
Okay, a second?
I have a second.
Motion and a second to continue the meal program in Karnes County on the same basis that it's been operated for the how long have we had this program? I don't know.
It's a long time, probably, I don't know exactly. I've been with the agency two years and I know this program has been going on for several years.
Their vehicle is about worn out, so I'd say it's been there a while.
Okay. And there's been a motion and a second, I believe?
There's a resolution on the back, I think we'll have to sign.
Okay.
And have it
Operate me to sign?
Sign and have it filed with the county clerk for it.
Okay. We will do that. And that'll be part of the motion or part of the that we're fixing to page?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. All in favor of the continuation of this action as set forth in the motion signified by raising your right hand. All of those same side, all will be for it. So we will
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming down here. If you need anything, just be sure and run by here and let me know or let my secretary know. So we'll stay up to date on it.
Thank you very much for that. And if you ever want me to come in to do a full presentation on our services, I'll be happy to do that.
We might want that done sometime. I'd like to know more about it. I'm due to the judge, the county judge, who hadn't been involved in it. So I would probably get in touch with you and see if we can get you to come down here and go through the program with us good.
Okay. Thank you. Look forward to it.
Thank you. Okay. Out of seven on the agenda, discuss, approve, disprove, right of entry permits for drainage improvements in Karn City. Karn City Rep. is going to present and he's here. Yep, are you ready?
I don't have much to add to it. I said at the last meeting, I presented all that to you all and what we're doing in the city. We've stopped for a moment on the drainage area. We'll be concentrating on Part B. We might get to see it after 1:23. Take a brush at the end.
And do you need us to approve the right of entry permits? Is that what you want us to do?
And authorize somebody to sign in your behalf.
Okay. Is there any particular way it has to be done?
No.
Okay. This is a good program. You want to say, "I'm not sure" because all the court understands what this program is about?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. That's what everybody does. So if we need a motion to approve the right of entry permits for drainage improvements in Karn City?
I'll make the motion that we approve the right of entry permits for the city of Karn City for the drainage improvements projects in the Karn City flood water reduction project.
And is there a second?
I got it.
Okay. Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to mandate allow the judge to sign it. He fought with the county clerk.
Okay.
And the only question I have, did Herb look at this? I guess he has.
I don't know whether he looked at this particular one. Did Herb, did he look at this? Anything about this?
It's too late.
This is exactly the same that's been going on that we've signed. I assume what before have we not?
It's what was presented at the last meeting. And Mr. Rosales had participated both in this program on a personal basis. And unless we reached a point that we're coming across too far.
And this is one that I will go ahead and sign whether
Yeah, I don't have an issue with the program. I think Herb ought to take a look at it, even if it's after the fact.
Okay. Well, then as soon as Herb takes a look at it, I'll sign it.
At least welcome to contact our city attorney because it was prepared by Frank Larson.
Frank Larson? Where is his office?
In San Antonio.
San Antonio. Okay. I'll see that against you too. Thank you very much. Yeah. All in favor of this motion signified by raising your right hand. And all of those same side, all voting for it. Motion secured. Okay. Next item out of the agenda is to discuss, act to amend the county employee manual to change vacation sick leave and holiday pay specific to the EMS department. Dennis, this is yours, so
Roger.
Tell us what we need to do.
The current county employee manual was set up for a more of an eight to five Monday through Friday paid period. Whereas our EMS personnel work two shifts. They work two 24-hour shifts and then they're off for a 96-hour shift. Some of the things on the current policy of the vacation, and we can take this page by page. The vacation time for the current employee is listed as five workdays. For those having been here one year, those after two years get 10 workdays. And it's specified in days, not hours. That presents a problem to us because one of our work weeks is actually two days, not five. So we would like to, or I would like to amend that to those with they'll receive two days vacation the first year and a second year of vacation at a rate of .334 working days per month, which is equivalent to four working days per year. That basically gives them a week of vacation their first year and two weeks of vacation their second year. I think that brings it in line with the 40-hour work week. One of the major problems that I face during budgeting is for the state, since they license our ambulances, we have to have a crew on those ambulances at all times. We're currently licensed for three. We provide two trucks at 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and one crew on a callback basis or an on-call basis. So those first two trucks have to, you have to have someone on them at all times. Where we run into problems, especially with having this much vacation, is not so much them taking the days off, but paying for the coverage for those trucks. Currently, we are budgeting for vacation-only $96,969.60 just for coverage for those vacation days. Whereas if we change it to this plan, we will be paying $74,805.12 for those coverage days. And, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. $22,164.48 is what we'll be paying. The difference in that is a savings of $74,805 that we're not having to budget for those extra coverage days. Now, I will say that I cover as many of those days as possible as I can, but I have another job to do besides just running on the truck. So I like running on the truck. It keeps my skill levels up too. But I can't cover, I can't cover everybody's I would, half of my job would be covering vacation days a year. From the vacation policy, the only other thing that I did change on here is if a holiday falls during an employee's vacation, they'll be charged in accordance with the policy on holidays and will be paid for the holiday and not charge the vacation balance. I changed that to where if one of my people is on vacation on a holiday, then they'll use their vacation day and not receive the holiday pay. Because our holiday, the way our holiday works is we receive a holiday comp time, which we'll get into in a minute, which is ridiculous in its own right. But, so that's the only two things that I changed on the vacation. The policy on sick leave, which is the second page. If anybody's stopping to ask questions, I'm going along with that.
Okay. Let me see if I understand this right. If we change, if the court changes to what you're talking about, you could schedule this to where if somebody wanted their vacation, they would start their vacation on days off and then the two days or three days, whatever they work, would fall into that and then it would go into the next off period?
Essentially, they work two 24-hour shifts in a 10-day period. So they could potentially take 22 days, have 22 days off of vacation if they scheduled it right and took all their vacation. I mean, it's almost like vacation for EMS personnel that work this type of schedule is, they don't need as much of it. If this was written in hours, it would be different. But the way the current county policy manual is written, it's in days. And, you know, 10 days when you only work two out of the week, that's five weeks.
You did this. What do you think?
It's fair.
Yes, sir.
I'm a little curious. You work two 24-hour days shifts?
Yes, sir.
And you get four days off?
Yes, sir.
So you get doesn't that sound a little excessive?
No, we're not going to go through questioning them about this. Question the commissioner's court if you have something to say.
Then I gotta ask the commissioner's court?
No, this is answered.
Has anybody looked into it, sir?
I think so.
I don't think so.
Well, you can take what you want to.
I was looking through it.
Look all you want to.
Thank you.
Anything else, Dennis?
Oh, not
You're not through right now.
Oh, not on the vacation policy, no, sir. The sick leave for, it's the same. Like I say, all these policies were written for an eight to five Monday through Friday crew or Monday through Friday office. The the current policy has full-time at a rate of four hours per paid period and maximum of eight hours per month. That I have not changed. However, I did take off the part-time personnel because we don't have part-time EMS staff. We do have some as-needed staff that are not regularly scheduled part-time staffers. They come in as needed and as they can come in to help alleviate some of the staffing issues when we are overrun and we do have a lot going on. The maximum accrual rate currently is at 240 hours. And I have, I'd like to change that to the maximum accrual rate for them at 144 hours. That's the equivalent of six days, which is three weeks of sick leave.
Does this carry over, Dennis, or is it ended annually on the sick leave?
Well, on the sick leave, once they reach that 144 hours, they won't accrue any more hours until they use that time up.
Okay.
So
It maxes out?
Yes. Then nothing has changed. By doing that on the sick leave alone, that results in a savings off my budget of $26,381.79 for coverage for those people when they do take off sick leave. I did not change any other policy on that. The next one is the holiday. Of course, most people in the county, with the exception of myself and the sheriff department, which they have their own policy for these things because they're actually on a different pay scale than we are. I the current way we get paid on holidays is if they work the holiday, then they receive that number of hours worked in paid leave time at time and a half pay per this manual, per the current manual. So what effectively ends up happening is I've had paid the person to work the day. Then I have to pay the person to take the day off at time and a half pay. Then I have to pay someone to work that day for that person being off at time and a half pay. Which in my book is
Triple time and a half.
Triple time and a half. And actually, it could be more than that because you don't know what day the holiday falls on, whether they're in overtime and they fall into that holiday or not. What I would propose and would like to do is for the hours worked during the holiday is to pay that employee double their normal, regular hourly rate for those hours worked. Now, I know somebody's out there going, "Well, EMS wants to get paid for holidays." Currently, the sheet, because I don't want to tell you wrong. Currently, for holidays, and this is just for the coverage for holidays, I am having to budget $155,000 for that. Where the cost of paying them for those holiday hours worked would be or a savings of $104,000 that I'm not having to budget for every year and carry over. Because those holiday comp days do carry over from year to year to year. And if they don't use those days for something, if they don't take off, if they're not then that's just money that we're carrying in every year, every year, every year, every year.
So in effect, with these revisions, your budget would come down to about $200,000?
Right at $205,000.
Plus fringe?
Yes. Plus, that's, you know, that's plus the taxes, the withholding. There's, I mean, there's so many other things that were just on paper that we don't have or don't show.
Dennis?
Yes, sir.
I've read and I've heard different things from that this, see, kind of let everybody know that the state is fixing to maybe regulate the hours?
Yes.
On how many hours that emergency personnel can work?
There are numerous studies all over the, well, all over the nation, really, hours that emergency personnel are working and it's not just EMS inspired to. I'm sure law enforcement of the actual numbers of hours on shift and the number of consecutive shifts. The ideal is that probably within the next year to two years, there'll be a ruling on that as to how many hours they can work in a week on a consecutive, in a consecutive shift. And that's do a lot to and this has been going on for a long time. I've been doing this for 20 years and this has always been a hot topic of how long to let your guys work, how many days do you give them off in between? How many shifts do they need a week? How long does that shift need to be? So, you know, we're awaiting some guidance right now on whether or not that's going to change. And once that changes, it's, it could be a good thing or it could be a total nightmare. But that is
Is that it?
That is it in a nutshell.
Okay. And you're recommending the adoption of all of the changes that you've discussed with us?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Item 12 on the agenda is to form an HR department.
That's not this.
I, I understand that completely. Would, would it be prudent to have the discussion with the HR person, supposedly an expert in this field?
We don't have an HR person yet, and we don't have an HR department, and I don't know whether we're gonna have one or not.
I understand, but would it be prudent to, you know, look at item twelve and see if there is one formed before making a decision on this? I mean-
I don't see the necessity for doing that, but, uh, if there's anybody on the court that feels like it should be done that way, it's legal.
This is an aside, Dennis, but how are your, uh, collections coming? Your uncollected balances and such as that?
We're working on those, um, and, like, I don't have it in front of me, so I can't, um... I would, I would like for you to come to my office today and sit down and let me pull all of that out where I have it there and, and kind of go over that with you. Um, I, I mean, we're collecting it. If, if it, if it can be paid for, we're getting it paid for. Uh, the biggest problems we have are the uninsured, the, the ones that don't give us any information, that don't, or that, that, that we can't get the information from, then it's just kind of a headache to get that information, but, you know, we are working on it.
Is there any, any downside to your proposal? Uh, how about your troops, they won't rebel on you and?
No, they, I, I went over this with them and, and they, they understand. I, most of the guys that work EMS, they don't take a lot of extra days off. Yes, you have that one or two person that every time they get eight or ten hours of sick leave, they think they need to take it, like a mini-vacation regardless, or vacation, or comp time, or any of that. Uh, but you do have, uh, you know, probably only have ten out of my twelve people, they're not going to take a vacation day, uh, unless it's just, or sick day unless they just have to, um, because when they do that, they're, they're losing money.
They, uh, comment while they're at it, two on, four off. Most fire departments that I'm aware of, paid fire departments, run one on, two off.
Exactly.
So, basically, you're at the same thing, it's just they're back-to-back instead of scattered out.
Yes.
And also, uh, in six days, if they're on two full days, if I'm understanding this right, they would have already accrued forty-eight hours. So, you're, you're hitting either overtime or comp time already.
Exactly, exactly. And we've looked at it several ways of, of doing different types of shifts. Um, out of Skosa County, where it's a forty-eight on, forty-eight hour shift, I don't like that, I don't think that gives the crews enough downtime in between working that, that period and being able to mentally just recharge yourself in between shifts because, you know, people can say what they want. And when you're running EMS and you're seeing the things we're seeing day in and day out, you have got to have time off to recharge your brain or you burn out real quick.
What, what is your, when does your shift change?
Uh, we change shift at seven o'clock in the morning. I have a new crew that comes on every day. So, I, I have one crew that starts Mondays.
Staggered.
They'll get off Wednesday morning, Tuesday a new crew, Wednesday a new crew. So, they just stagger each other. So, I always have one fresh crew on the first day.
Well, I would comment that, uh, I appreciate Dennis looking at this. This is a, uh, department that policies did not fit the schedule of the county policy. So, I mean, the vacation didn't. So, I appreciate Dennis looking at this and trying to be economized and save the county money. And therefore, I would make a motion if we accept this policy. With, we are understanding also that it would be, it's subject to future decisions and so forth, and it might be changed from now on time. But I would make a motion if we accept it.
I'll second that with the, with the comment that Dennis, um, more than, at the bottomless policy thing, could you put the date that it was approved?
Oh, certainly, I will.
And then if we do create an HR department, I want them to look at it too.
Certainly.
And any changes we can recommend or to it, we can still have time to do it, but at least we have something in place.
Yes, sir.
And it strictly says, "Corn's County EMS policy on vacation and/or sick leave and holiday for ambulance personnel only."
Yes.
It specified to-
Yes, because if at some point in time we do ever get an administrative assistant or something, they're going to fall back under the regular county guideline.
Dennis, uh, you know, I appreciate greatly the work that y'all do and anybody that haven't, as usual, just doesn't understand how important it is when you have a problem to be able to rely on, uh, a reliable source for this type of, of work. And y'all do a tremendous job, I think, and, and have my admiration. You do something that I couldn't and wouldn't do, and I appreciate you very much. Uh, I think the job you do is tremendous.
Thank you.
And, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that's from me personally, it's not from the court or anything else.
Thank you.
Is there, are there any other questions or concerning this, uh, policy amendment? And if not, do we have a, I don't think, where we have a motion yet?
Yes.
He made the motion, and there was a second. Uh, is there any further discussion, any of the court? If not, all in favor of the amendment of the, uh, um, vacation, sick leave, holiday pay specific only to the EMS department as, as, as far by Dennis Kelly, uh, signify your approval and, and, and adoption of the motion by raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign, all voting for. Dennis, thank you, I'll let very much stay. You've got another, uh, item on the agenda to discuss, act renewed contract with AR Management Solutions for the EMS billing services. You want to tell us about that?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, it, it's, it's a contract for, uh, renewal for our, our billing service. Uh, I gave that contract to Herb earlier in the week. Um, he had some questions about it. Um, I'll let him say.
Okay.
Judge, there's two or three questions that I'd like to get settled with the company before I make a recommendation. If we can maybe roll that over to the middle of the court, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, next meeting we'll schedule this again.
Okay.
But I wanted to take care of her. I don't want it dragging around, this is important.
There are two questions that I have that have to do with liability, and I just need to get questions.
Okay. All right, if you'll report back to the court, let me know when to put it on the agenda. The next meeting-
If you go ahead and put it on the-
Okay, we'll do so. Thank you, Herb. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge, uh, if the court would, I would like to move item thirty. Uh, for a presentation on San Antonio Food Bank by Mr. Cooper. Uh, he's President C, uh, CEO of San Antonio Food Bank, and they just arrived in the essence of time. We could move number thirty.
Okay, we, I will do that. Uh, move item thirty to follow up item nine. We'll go ahead at this time and consider item thirty. And you're, you're Mr. Cooper?
Yes, Judge.
All right, and you're?
Stephanie Smith and Mario Blado.
Thank y'all for coming down with that, we appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Judge, and thank you very much for accompanying that schedule and reading this up on the agenda. Thank you, Commissioner Dukey. Uh, Judge, Commissioners, as mentioned, my name's Eric Cooper. I have the privilege of, of being a part of your San Antonio Food Bank. It's been a few years since I've been out and wanted just to share with you, the Food Bank does serve sixteen counties here in southwest Texas. Uh, within those sixteen counties, we work with a lot of partner organizations, different nonprofits that are providing food to needy families throughout our service territory. We, on average, feed about fifty-eight thousand people each week through that network and through our sixteen counties. Stephanie has passed out some information about the Food Bank. It's a pretty good-sized packet there with lots of information on our different programs and services, a little bit about nutrition, and, um, just lots of different highlights of some of the stuff that we're up to. But, uh, I wanted to come personally, number one, to express just gratitude in all humility. We are so grateful and, and represent the, the voice of residents here in the county that you all invest in making sure that they get food. When I'm out in the communities that we serve, Pusser County is an example of, of folks that are doing it right, where, where all boats are rising in the harbor. And congratulations on, on really your leadership and what you're doing for everyone in the community, from infrastructure, roads, to facilities, and to making sure that, that families get something to eat. I wanted to also just share, just the, when you think of those that we serve, about a third are kids and about a third are seniors. The middle third are what we call able-bodied people, eighteen to sixty-five years of age. On average, more than half are working, uh, just not making enough to make ends meet. So, by investing in us, as you have done, we've been able to bring to the residents of the county almost a half a million dollars in food and grocery products. We wrap our solutions in three areas, food for today, food for tomorrow, and food for a lifetime. Food for the day is really getting people access to food immediately. We struggle to do that in the county just because we don't have a partner organization here where we could stock food on-site, so when that immediate urgent need arises, we can refer them to a partner organization. Those typically are faith-based organizations, churches. And so, we could use your help, uh, calling on the faith community to see if one of them would consider operating a pantry. The second phase of our work is in that food for tomorrow, and that's where we're doing pretty well in getting families food through our different programs and services, which include when families need to enroll in federal benefits like healthcare, they can work with our folks at the call center, they're there till eight o'clock each night, and they help residents as they're enrolling in those programs. Food for a lifetime, the third phase, again, is workforce development and nutrition education. And I think that there's, um, continued operation, opportunity for improvement for us to connect with residents as they're needing that type of service and information. But we're literally collecting food from the field to the dinner table. Many of the farmers and ranchers are supporting us, whether with crops or with venison. Um, and it is just a true privilege to be able to, to serve those in need. In wrapping up, I, I just, lots of different experiences, but, um, you know, when I think about the seniors, um, that are struggling, uh, I, I can't help but think of a, of a call that I got from a woman who, you know, called us at the Food Bank and just said, "Hey, I wanted to talk to a guy that runs the place, and, um, I thought maybe one of our trucks were, you know, speeding or something, I was going to get a gear fall." She just asked me one question, she said, "I want to know, how'd you know it was my birthday?" Well, I, I said, "Yeah, I don't know who you are, and so, I don't know." And she says, "Well, uh, you know, I, I go to the senior center, I get a, I get a box of food there each month, and I want you to know how much I appreciate it. My doctor has got me on a new prescription, and I'm struggling to pay for the prescription and, and pay for food, so everything that's in that food box really, really is important." And, uh, but today in my food box, she said she got a birthday cake. And, uh, you know, uh, she was celebrating her eighty-fourth birthday, and, um, and I thought from where she's talking, you know, we, we pick up a lot of day-old cakes from lots of retailers like HEB and Walmart. Oftentimes, it says "Happy Birthday" with somebody else on it, and they didn't pick it up or whatever. It ended up coming our way. Well, you know, obviously, a volunteer at the, at the center knew it was her birthday and made sure one of those cakes got in there. But when she, she hung up, she was expressing how she didn't have any family and, and how, how sad that, that is to be alone. And, and she said that she was gonna, um, uh, celebrate her birthday that night. She said she was gonna cut off a slice, and, and then she said she was gonna put the rest of the cake in the freezer, because she said, "I want it to last." And, um, I, I, I hung up, encouraged that, you know, we're, we're making a difference with them, saddened that, um, there is a lot of struggle in the community. Just thank y'all, God bless you, for, for just making sure that those that are most vulnerable, those residents of, of the county, um, have their needs taken care of. So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions and, uh, we'll do that this time.
Why, why don't you comment on your accessory programs? I've unfolded your little brochure here, and, and I think these are things that certainly I didn't know you provided, and I'm talking about Kids Cafe and that list that you have there. Would you like to just briefly run over some of those things? And I don't want to take a lot of your time, but I think a lot of people probably, I sure didn't have the iden, excuse me, did not know how many things you actually do.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Reynolds. So, so we really work to, to serve all, all communities, kids to seniors. And so, for children, we have several different programs. Most of the time, families are served through our pantries. Because there's not a pantry here in the community, we're doing everything through kind of our mobile strategy. And so, we have a mobile pantry, and, and that's where families would go to get food. And so, we also have specific targeted programs to provide kids hot evening meals. And we have a backpack program, which can get kids food on the weekends. We try to partner with schools where a teacher or a school nurse or someone that knows that a child is in need on the weekend, having gotten their free reduced-price breakfast and lunch at school, now there's some food for them on the weekend. It's just basically a little Ziploc baggie with six kind of snack meals in it. Then we do a lot around distributing produce. And so, um, some of the programs there will highlight those distributions of produce that's combined with nutrition education. So, uh, in a lot of households, um, moms work in, dads work in, maybe moms, you know, uh, not skilled in the kitchen and doesn't know how to cook. And so, sometimes, some of the produce items that we're bringing, um, you know, they really don't know how to prepare. And so, our nutrition educators will teach, um, how to prepare those meals. They'll also teach how to read food labels and how to get the best nutrition for the dollar. The call center responds to, to lots of different requests, but, um, there's some major federal programs for SNAP, which is formerly the Food Stamp Program, WIC for expected mothers for women with small children, Medicaid for low-income uninsured, the Children's Health Insurance Program for, for low-income children, and long-term care for seniors. Those applications to, to receive those benefits sometimes can be a barrier for those trying to seek help. For instance, the seniors trying to fill out the application for long-term care. It's pretty comprehensive, and it's online, it's multiple pages, it's written on the level, and it's just a very difficult, um, application for, for families to complete. So, our staff can help them through that process, help them complete the applications properly. They like to say there's no, there's no credit for close. So, if you, if you forget to fill in a box or kind of dot an i, cross a t, then you're going to get a letter from the state saying, you know, "Sorry, you don't qualify because you didn't fill out the form correctly." Oftentimes, people read that, "I don't qualify," and they just assume, "Well, I wasn't eligible." And so, um, our staff will work with residents to make sure that if they are eligible, that, that they've got benefits. And so, that's a few of the programs, um, to serve kids and seniors. And there's a few others, but, uh, thank you for asking that question.
I'd say I'd like to recognize Stephanie, 'cause, uh, Stephanie Smith, she's, every time we have a distribution, she's here. And through her guidance and along with the extension service, we formed a food policy committee, so we're trying to get the right nutrition to the, you know, just to balance the, the distributions for everything. And, uh, I might add that October to the Food Bank, and, and your, your garden is something else that y'all take care of. take care of, and the training you provide there is a big service to the San Antonio area and as well as Russell County and the Cog. And I thank y'all for providing us what you can, when we can, and it's a big thing, it's a big... Since the slowdown in the oil field, we've seen more and more people coming asking for food, or who do they go talk to, or... And then the teachers at the schools are saying there is a big issue about making sure the kids, when they go home every day, the parents may not be there, but at least they have something they can eat. And that's been a big help to us, so I really do appreciate what y'all do.
Thank you, Commissioner Dubinick, and thank you for your leadership on this issue. And again, we think Stephanie is pretty awesome, too. She's out here all the time and is a big advocate, and just a privilege to serve, so thank you.
I'm not sure that everybody has access to these that the court did. And there are just some details in there that are interesting that should be interesting. Y'all provide emergency food assistance to fifty-eight thousand individuals every week. Donors are all sorts of entities and people, and the Food Bank acquired and distributed fifty million pounds of food and grocery products to more than five hundred human service agencies last year. That was one year. Partner agencies are all sorts of different things that I won't go through. And the clients, fifty-eight thousand individuals a week that acquire food through this, that probably wouldn't, some of them wouldn't be living at all, and others probably not very well without y'all's help. And we appreciate you very much down here, our part of it. So thank you.
And by the way, with our distributions, if anybody wants to volunteer and help us pass out food on the Food Days, please come.
And when are the Food Days?
First Monday of the month, and then we're gonna move one to the third.
The last Wednesday.
Last Wednesday. At the show barn.
The board Wednesday is the senior program. First Monday of the month is our overall month.
At the show barn, we're gonna have a special one in Rungy.
We're gonna have another one in Rungy.
In Rungy, back on the thirteenth.
And Food Fair on the seventeenth. At the show barn, so this one there, you're gonna be covered quite a bit. But a lot of people have problems with their budget this time of year, fall back to school, so.
Thank y'all very much, we appreciate everything you do. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We'll be on item ten of the agenda. Discuss, approve, disapprove two thousand and sixteen tax collection software contract with Pritchard and Abbott, and that's Brenda Gammes.
I have the contracts up there. Herb has looked over them. I'd like to introduce Kevin McLennan. He is the Information Services Manager with Pritchard and Abbott, he has a little presentation to talk to y'all about.
First of all, I want to thank Free Business. We renewed the contract, we took over the tax collection in fourteen. We have made major improvements on the hardware and the software side since the initial contract. And of course, with this last legislative update, we'll have a whole nother set of improvements and legislative changes to add to it. We have spent over six hundred hours cleaning up the data and converting data in the last year, and taking care of supplemental data that has come in since certification. So those are the big pictures of what we've done. We are sharing the cost of the server with the appraisal district, the appraisal district also uses our server. So instead of having two separate servers and costs, we've combined those together. And there's some savings of man-hours for Brendan's group because some of these name and address changes are automated, so that work's not being done twice. So we're trying to approve that. We have replaced the server in the appraisal district office, we replaced the sonic wall. There was a pretty bad virus that went around last year that killed a lot of these controllers or sonic walls. That has been replaced, so a lot's been happening. A lot of data's been flowing back and forth with all the activity. Just because the activity's going down on the drill, it doesn't mean that there's not a lot of, a lot happening as far as the ownership of those mails, and that keeps getting bigger and bigger. Do y'all have any questions?
Is this a system just put in a couple of years ago?
In twenty-fourteen. And then we updated the server this year.
So we're not gonna have a problem with, like the tax office and the Arthur's office had, where things don't work?
Oh, no, we've been up and working since fourteen.
This is a system that is working now and they're just adding to it?
Yes.
It's not converting to something new?
No, 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 it's just a renewal of our annual contract.
Did you say Archer?
Archer.
Archer. And then the total amount is thirty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty, that's the annual fee.
Yes, sir.
And it's paid quarterly, quarterly payments. The first one will be from October the two thousand and fifteen, seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Then the remaining three-quarters will be nine thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents per each quarter, January, April, and July. And this is a budgeted item, correct, one?
Yes. Brenda, I only have one question, it says licensed users eight, and I only count seven in your department. Is that, so John Banks has access? Is he the eighth one?
Do you have a public terminal up there? Do you have a public terminal?
No, we don't.
Okay, I'll look into that before. If that's all that she has, then that will be reduced by five hundred dollars. I'll check that before I leave town.
I noticed that your tech support is billed turn to turn, and I see your office is in Fort Worth. Where does your tech support come out of? That's a lot of travel time to get from Fort Worth down here.
I have them all over the state. We do have one person in Beeville that helps out, but I prefer them to come out of Fort Worth, especially on issues like servers, because the two people out in Fort Worth are the ones in East Texas or West Texas. You know, they've done probably thirty servers this year, and so I don't mind those people that have that expertise traveling, because I want it done right.
My concern is we're five hours from Fort Worth, five hours back, so that's about seven hundred and fifty, eight hundred and fifty dollars of expense getting them here and getting them back, and that for a small problem would be quite a...
Yes, sir. Okay. Small problems, we're gonna try to address those remotely. Most of those will be handled over the phone. Because you're right, I fuss at my group if they have to run down there and it's something simple, those type of things. Yeah, because you're right, it would kill us. Now, like when we replaced the server earlier this year, we didn't charge you for that travel time. I consider that part of hosting your data. That would be something out of... Let's say you had a virus attack and killed your PCs, and you called us and said, hey, I've got a virus, I've got it off the internet, would you come down here and scrub my machines? That is a billable item. Now, if you have somebody local, I have no problem with them working on that. That would be an exemption.
This has worked out okay, Brenda?
Oh, yes. No complaints.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
We appreciate y'all.
We'll move on to item eleven.
Judge Young, we approved the two thousand and sixteen tax collections software contract with Pritchard and Abbott, as Arthur didn't allow you to sign, as well as the tax assessor collector, to sign and execute the contract, and they'd be filed with the county clerk?
Contingent on the verification, no, contingent on the verification of number of licensed users.
Yes, from, yeah, seven to five, whatever it was, five.
Eight to seven.
Eight to seven, with the reduction, if it is seven, be a reduction by five hundred dollars.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand. All votes, same time, all voting for motion carried. We'll move on to item eleven. Discuss, consider, act on advertising for a full-time emergency management coordinator for Orange County to utilize the county website as well as local paper for two weeks. And that means advertising for the position, I believe, authored by Shelby.
Currently, we don't have an emergency manager coordinator. I've been assigned duties, and I don't mind doing it right now, you know, but I'm, as answer your duties, but we need to find one, or the judge will have to be the, he'll be the one to be the coordinator or the emergency manager. But I think we need to advertise, we've got a budgeted line item for him, and a budgeted in a budget for an emergency manager in the department. So I'm just asking that the county look at advertising for an emergency manager coordinator and utilize the county website as well as local paper to advertise for two weeks or until it's filled. Again, I'm assuming they do, so they find somebody, that I'm not getting any additional money, you're nothing to be stealing. I'd just like for the court to have a, you know, discussion, or whatever y'all want to do.
Okay.
We discussed it in the budget hearing, and I think we need an emergency manager coordinator. Advertising in local paper and on the website should be sufficient, because it needs to be someone local who knows local, so it's no use to advertise statewide or anything. I agree it's necessary to do.
Here, y'all, and I don't know that I agree particularly that it is necessary, I kind of think that we can tip to it in another way, but...
Would I take no action now and just fill in?
I understand that, I understand what we're doing. This is, you want to take action to advertise for the position, and...
But if you have something else in mind, you know, still, we have a lot of time.
I understand that. I just was saying how I feel on this particular item, and...
I just don't want it to fall to the wayside, you know, sometimes we procrastinate about what we do.
There's an idea, and it's not, didn't start here, that with a county this size, there may not be a need for this, this kind of person. There may be other ways to take care of it. I want to be sure we explore that. We don't want to throw our money away on something that's not necessary.
I'm sorry, I did vote for the setting the department up, but I think the judge and I probably have similar thoughts about handling it in another way. I'd prefer kicking it down the road a little bit and let the judge explore what ideas he has and come back to the court if that doesn't offend anyone.
No, I just, we used to, you know, prior to budget time, we used to...
And I'll try to get something together and get it back to the court, perhaps at the next meeting, if I should be able to.
That'd be fine.
All right. All right, we'll put this as an item to discuss on the next meeting, and I'll try to have something. We'll see where we are then. Okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll move on to item twelve.
Yes, sir.
Discuss, consider, act on creating, this is basically, no, that's not the same thing, creating a human resource department, hiring a human resource director, interviews were held, and there's a recommendation, this was by you, Shelby, for hiring a human resource, a particular person that's hired, a human resource director, sixty thousand dollars per year salary, and who will report to the county judge. Do you want to discuss that further?
We've been, we've been talking about this, creating a human resource department for a while, we held interviews, we interviewed five people, and they were all qualified. However, I think at the last meeting, or two meetings, whatever it was, we were talking about the salary range. I put down sixty thousand, but actually I had made a motion, the court voted on the motion from forty-five to fifty-five. Mr. Reynolds had commented on sixty, so that sixty number just stuck in my mind, I was to allow the judge to negotiate a salary range with the person who would be selected. My recommendation from all the interviews was Mary Huzana, that she be hired as the human resource director. And so I just threw that out there, so, you know, with the budget time, we've been talking about a lot of things here in the county, getting the payroll thing transferred over to the HR, as well as getting some of our other human resource things, duties, or human resource items on track or updated. And Mary was my recommendation, not to say that somebody else may have them, I mean, the judge may have somebody in mind, or maybe one of you commissioners been approached by somebody that was interviewed, I don't know, but to me, Mary's, has all the credentials and is well-qualified to do the job.
Did the judge, was he involved in the interview?
The judge and also Mr. Hancock.
Are you comfortable with the lady, Judge?
I would rather wait until a couple of weeks and then...
Okay, well, I'm favorable to it.
I don't have any reason to not be for her and Mary Huzana, no reason at all. I just want to be sure we have covered all the area that we need to, and that we have the proper salary range.
Well, the reason I ask was, obviously, this person's gonna work closely with you and have to have a decent working relationship, so, you know, it'd be good if it's someone that you do feel comfortable with, but that aside, you know, we can do, reschedule it for the next meeting.
Let's just set it up for the next meeting, and then we should be ready to move forward. Is it all right with you, Jim?
Fine, again, I just don't, I just don't want us to put this by the wayside, this is something that we need to do, I strongly feel, and we need to get this department up and running.
Well, there's something question about a county this size having this department that I want to be sure I look into properly, and y'all each should also. So we'll set it on the agenda for the next meeting and move on from there. Okay, item fifteen on the agenda, discuss, approve, disapprove, the line item amendment to the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen Sheriff's Department food budget, which is item one hundred days, five sixty days, three 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 zero, to be used for the acquisition of thirty-seven body cameras and storage devices for the sheriff's deputies and four constables, in addition to fund the salary of a data technician for one month during the current fiscal year. That's... that's presented by the sheriff, the other day, Sheriff.
Good morning. Judge and Commissioner's Court, we're back to, you know, of course, the body cameras, and what I'm asking is to use money that we have in our, the item budget number that we have, that we could use to purchase the cameras. I think it's, I don't know, the one, something like two hundred and thirty thousand do we have for that item right now?
That's probably what's remaining, yes.
That was the food budget item for the jail, the existing jail, but also for the new jail that, that was set up with a fair amount of money because of the size of the new jail, which has not opened yet, and there will not be as much money needed in the food part of the new jail because of it not getting into operation, if I understand.
Correct.
Correcting, okay. And you feel like that the body cameras and storage devices were the best thing that you needed for your office, that we could utilize the money in a proper way for the access money?
Correct.
Was that correct?
For the sheriff's office and for constables, yes, sir.
And the reason for it is because the legislature mandated this to become effective September one, and so we can't wait until next year's budget to acquire the equipment, the department has to meet the laws set for by the legislature.
What are they going to do to save the deal?
Oh, I don't want to wait around and see.
Well, also, also, is there a grant involved in this? If we get it done, we get part of the money back.
Correct, Commissioner Reynolds. Do you have any idea what amount of the grant might be?
It's a seventy-five percent. This can be up to...
It's up to seventy-five percent, Judge, you can apply for, through the state grant, if you, if we spend this thirty-three thousand for these cameras, there's a state grant program that says seventy-five percent if you're awarded that, and like I presented to y'all the other day, the deal, we also apply for that grant, the Conical Phillips, for thirty thousand, to fund this also, if we don't get the grant. And on the federal side, Obama administration has put money in there to apply for a fifty percent grant, so we plan on applying for all three of those.
Y'all are running on your revenue trail to try to get in all the grants you can, which, which is important to Orange County, of course, what you're doing. Thank you. What else? You, you need, you need a motion, and we need a motion and a second, and a vote to change the use of the funds.
I would move, turn my thing on here, I would move that we approve the line item move in the sheriff's department food budget to be allowed to be changed to the line item, which could be used for the acquisition of thirty-seven body cameras, storage devices for the sheriff's department, four constables, and in addition to fund the salary of the data technician for one month during this fiscal year.
I'm not clear why, are we just doing that for one month? Is that all we need?
No, but since we're still in, the next budget doesn't start till October first.
We can ask them.
Okay, and so they're being budgeted in the next year?
They're budgeted.
Alright, there was a motion, and is there any other discussion from the court? All in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand. All vote, same sound, all voting for it. Discuss this, well, that's all of y'all, y'all want to stay and ask for something else?
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
One thing it needs.
Okay, discuss this, and that was the Orange County jail project, so no action needed at this time, authored by Jeff Javon. Jeff, are you ready?
Yes. On the jail, I wanted to just give you another update, kind of like I did last month. I've spoken to Donnie Kramer a couple times in Lorraine Bailey about a few items. The jail, right now, they're delayed about four weeks because of the drainage issues with respect to the change to go underground on that as requested by the city. Donnie gave us a schedule yesterday, which shows the pushback from last month's schedule of the final inspections by the city and fire marshal and other systems to August twenty-fourth, to be followed by a jail condition inspection. So right now, the project is in completion in early September, which is about a month later than it was when I came to y'all last month because of this four-week delay on the drainage. Most of that delay relates to the revisions of the civil drawings to accommodate the change. The, the project appears to be getting the attention it needs, it's not going quickly. In fact, Pete and I were out there on Wednesday looking at it, and they're getting the work done, but they're just having a hard time getting subs to get out there on call, so they come out there too late and things just go slow. It looks like they lost about two weeks of the schedule in the last six weeks as far as getting things done. Part of that was because of the drainage issue and permitting issues the city brought to HMC's attention in the last few weeks, so I don't know that both, I'd say maybe one of those weeks that was lost is probably due to circumstances that HMC wasn't in control of. But it's still progressing. The question was asked of me last month about our ability to cover our delay damages, and so I checked on that, did some calculations, and I'll share that with you now. We've got, in the contract, about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in retained funds right now. The total contract value is just under ten million, so we'll have, by the time the work is done, just under five hundred thousand dollars in retainage that we'll be able to hold on to or deduct from during the closeout process for delays. The current four-week delay is probably not delays that are subject to the liquidated damages clause because they're not really HMC's doing. And so what I did was I calculated, for the purposes of today's update, delays by HMC from the original completion date of December ninth of two thousand fourteen until August first, giving them almost a month credit based on their current projected schedule, which of course is subject to change, in not charging them for the LDs from August second to August twenty-fourth, which is when they're projecting substantial. But using that rough calculation, at seven hundred and fifty dollars a day, we have accrued liquidated damages of one hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. In addition to that, we have the additional services fees were penned to Lorraine Bailey's firm for their continued contract administration of project management services. As of July seventh, they had billed the county, and I believe the county had paid full one hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars. So our total delay damages as of August first are just about two hundred and ninety-six thousand. So we're still a hundred, almost two hundred thousand dollars good to good on the retainage as far as how much money we have, that we're going to use to negotiate with HMC for completion. So financially, we're still protected. There's not a lot of action from the county that I would recommend at this point to spur HMC along further, they do have two people on site supervising. Donnie Kramer is still project manager, he's out there virtually every day, they have an assistant for him, the subs are there, it's just, it's just slow going. They're just not given this job the priority designation it needed once they got dropped, but they're still, they're still performing. Your remedy in the contract is dollars, and we're getting dollars. Every time we've, every time we've seen the progress slow to an unacceptable level, unacceptable rate, we've sent a notice of default letter and they've picked it back up. At this point in time, until we get done with this drainage issue, we're not going to be in a position to do that again. If we find that that concrete work doesn't progress as expected once the civil redesign is done, then we can take better action in the next few weeks. That's going to where the project stands.
Do we have, the other day when we were out there, for those of you who weren't here, it was commented that perhaps the underground as opposed to the surface drainage would be about a wash cost-wise, has that been ascertained yet?
That's my understanding from Donnie, he hasn't gotten final numbers from the subcontractor, but when I talked to him on Wednesday morning, he did tell me that he expects there to be an insignificant change in cost of damage. So it should be just a time concern, not a dollar concern.
How much delay is it going to cause?
On the, on the drainage?
Yeah.
It's about a four-week delay. The work should progress in about a week, once the drawings are done, which is what they projected originally for that concrete work to be done, although it's not underground. The delay really relates to the redesign. They don't, he doesn't project a significant increase in cost or time to get the work done, and he's got a subcontractor who is prepared to start the drainage work for us on standby, ready to get. One thing he did say was that with respect to the concrete work and its parking lot for the paving and sidewalks and things, he put that on hold because of the city permitting issues on paving and fencing. The city's now told us they waived any request for paving permits, and so he's now got that contractor back engaged, they'll come out and do that work. That's as much as I know about the concrete work.
Do you have any idea when they're going to come to do that work?
I suspect they'll coordinate when they do that drainage work.
Did we get the issue resolved on the gas line?
I don't think that's been fully resolved yet, man. He was waiting on Centricall Energy to determine whether they would allow us to go across the property, as opposed to running next to Malloy's property.
Are we in any kind of discussions or anything with Malloy anymore?
No.
Okay.
I have a question, is there, was there ever an agreement done with Malloy for the offset, is there anything, or just a verbal commitment?
I believe it's right.
You didn't write?
I believe there's, I have not seen it, but Donnie tells me that he has a letter that he's seen, that I think Lorraine Bailey wrote on the county's behalf, that agreed to a four-foot offset towards his property, four foot from ours, and totally, an eight-foot, eight-foot vegetation buffer. And that one tree on the corner of the property in the front is what's caused the problem because if Centricall takes out that tree, it reduces the buffer below any people.
I was just wondering about that.
Okay.
So you can build your fence and gate foot line and go as high as you want.
We need to get that resolved and get on down the road.
Yeah, but Donnie's working on it, and we'll stay, we'll stay attentive, and Lorraine's aware of it.
Well, they need to do something.
They're working on it.
Okay, is that everything about the due?
That's all I have for jail.
Anybody have any more questions? Okay, let's move on to the next item of yours, which is discuss, approve, and disapprove action relating to negotiation with Black Topper Technologies in the 2014 Orange County Seal Code Program.
Alright, so the, this is the, this is the 2014 contract that we had with, with Black Topper. Black Topper came to a pre-construction meeting in March and appeared to be wanting to do the work in July of this year now. Then they changed course and decided that they didn't want to do the work. They, they had a lawyer send us a letter telling us that we had delayed the job for more than ninety days, and they were going to, they were going to invoke their right to terminate the contract, not perform the work. We met about that, got involved in some discussions with them, I talked to the lawyer a couple times and sent some letters back and forth. Eventually, in June, we sent a letter declaring them to be in default, telling them that they had an obligation to perform, that we did not delay the work, and therefore they couldn't invoke that clause of the contract. That was enough to get them to engage us in discussions and come down here for a meeting. We had a meeting on Wednesday of this meeting with them, it was their lawyer, the Black Topper Technologies owner and estimator, who are father and son, their project engineer, and then David Underbrink and Mike Wozniak for us, and myself went out and met with them and some of the riders, and talked about ways to resolve our discrepancies and differences. They were concerned with the type of materials we were using to apply the seal code, we had suspected emulsion because it was going down in the winter time, in the summertime, it's there to use different products, and they're proposing to use AC fifteen P as a base to do the seal code. We've agreed with that. If there's increase in the cost, we did a unit price contract with them, and we agreed to consider an increase in price and cost for the AC product because it is a better application for this time of the year. We've also recognized that in the years since the project was bid, some of the roads have deteriorated because of time and because of the wet spring we had, and also additional usage. The contract requires us to prepare the roads before the seal code is applied, in other words, we have to go out there, kill the vegetation that's going in there, sweep and clean them, lay them if needed, get them ready. We still committed to doing that work in order to get Black Topper to do, to do their seal code. Some of the roads in the program were shifted to the 2015 program, and were actually already finished by Dick Tex Payton recently. Other roads in the program that we originally required a single code application are now going to be needed two code application because of the quality of the roadway. So what we've agreed to do with Black Topper is give them a prioritization list, telling them which roads we think are the, are the most needed for work, which require the two code applications. They've agreed to shift the work around in priority based on what we tell them now as opposed to what's in the original contract designs. So we've come to an agreement about everything with respect to them doing the work, they'll, they will do the work, so they backed away from their demand to terminate. The only sticking point left is that we did the job, well, actually, we advertised, they did the job, promising a one-year warranty. They're involved in a dispute in Dawson County right now over warranty work and are very shy and hesitant to agree to any warranty obligations. The contract hasn't won the warranty, they signed the contract. At this point, in their settlement offer to us, which I received in a letter yesterday, they, they've offered to give us zero warranty. They call it the text-out warranty, because they do text-out work, and the text-out warranty is no warranty. They just want to say we're not going to be due warranty. So at this point, for consideration on the table, is an offer to accept this compromise proposal, which I just described to you, with zero warranty, and get them to begin the work, although they can't begin the work, probably until the middle of September at the earliest because of their constraints with respect to getting materials and, and their crews that are, their analysis gathered across Texas and West Texas and Southeast Texas. The alternative, which is what I would recommend, would be to engage in one more round of discussions with them, where I tell them that they signed the contract with a warranty, and they have to give us a warranty. I don't believe, after talking to David, that we need, that we need a one-year warranty. David and John and I just think, seem, seem that they, that if there's any warranty failures in the application of the seal code, we'll know that within a few weeks of their completion. So at most, we would need, you know, probably a three-month warranty, and at least we probably need a one-month warranty. Anything that happens beyond that is not... Anything that happens beyond that is not going to be really a warranty type affair. It could be a usage or performance failure, which is probably not going to be caused by their application of the seal code. So at this point, I would request, if you don't want to approve the deal as of that one, that you give me the authority to negotiate with them a little bit more and tell them that they have warranty obligations and give us something. And we'll do our best to get a warranty. And if they don't want to give us a warranty, we still have the option of pulling them in default, keeping that in place, and having someone else do the work or the man and their surety do the work and pay us back. Those are still viable options. The fact of the matter is, they signed a contract with a one-year warranty, and by not honoring that or threatening to not honor that, they're reaching their obligations to us.
I agree that if they fail to get any warranty, they've reached their conference. And I also agree that, what little I know about paving, that the 90 days would be a decent warranty that we could live with, so there was an application. So I would tend to give Jeff the authority to go ahead and continue negotiating.
I certainly agree with the allowing Jeff to go forward with negotiations. I guess my thought or my question is, if the last comment you made about them going into default on the thing, are they judgment-proof? I mean, are we better off to take something rather than a default and wind up with nothing?
Well, I don't know whether they're judgment-proof. They have a surety that's not judgment-proof. But I'll tell you, based on the meeting on Wednesday, they want to do the work. They're willing to do the work. They're just concerned about getting involved in another dispute with another county like they're in in Dawson County.
I understand. You get stung, you get a little gunshot.
Right. It's their little gunshot to warranty, but they're not gunshot anything else. And if we go to them and we tell them that the county will accept nothing less than a three-month warranty, or we're calling on your bonds, I have a strong feeling they're going to accept that.
I think that would be reasonable. What I know, when we discussed this informally the other afternoon, because of the double shot on some of these roads, it's going to reduce the number of miles that we get over. If I remember, seems like the original plan was for somewhere in the proximity of 30 miles. Is that more or less?
Like 33 miles, yes, 35.
Is there an estimate of how many miles we might actually get out of it? Were y'all able to ascertain that the other day?
Not yet. What Jeff said about the plan, some of the roads, a single course would need a double. We've taken some of the work out and asked Big Tex to go ahead and do that. So I think we're going to be in the neighborhood of the same price, but we have not sat down and actually tagged related everything until you guys had a chance to hear this.
So it would not be a great reduction in mileage, is what I would think.
Yeah. And the roads that need it, the most, we'll get it. We'll get the two-course application. Some of the ones that are slated for a single, probably will have to go until next year's program.
I move we go ahead and approve allowing Jeff to continue negotiations with Black Topper's for the 2014 County Seal Code Program as he's laid out for us.
With a three-month warranty?
With a three-month warranty.
A second. So the discussion from the court is not all in favor of the motion signifying the revision of the right thing? All opposed, same side. I'll wait for the motion here. Three months. All right. And will y'all know this agreement?
I'm going to call them that, man. I'll know very soon.
Tell them we're getting empty. This is going to be where we're going to begin.
We know. We'll get that request.
Good. Is that everything then on that item?
That is it on that item, yeah.
Item 17, review request for qualification for Road and Bridge Materials and Equipment.
Sixteen.
I'm sorry. Contract revision, discuss, approve, disapprove, contracts for revisions and modifications, contracts for County Road 326 and County Road 182. Which two roads are those worthy?
These are ready to go up for bid. These have not been, bids have not been published for this yet. We met about it last month, and there were contracts that were given to me to review that we're supposed to go to bid at the, right now, end of July. We determined that I should spend some time reviewing the terms and rewriting the conditions to get a set of kind of documents that we could use for these roads and for future roads with Nacimah, as opposed to doing a piecemeal approach like we did for the Ferris and the Big Tex contracts. So I did that, and I gave you, you should have in front of you, a set of general conditions, which I drafted in the time since the last meeting, that contain terms based on my recommendations that are more favorable to the county than the standard EJCC, which is here, Joint Commission Standard Form Contract that I've been using previously. I did do, I did this contract based on the EJCC. It follows the same basic format as what has been used previously. I actually condensed a little bit of it, so it went from something like 65 pages to 54 pages. And I've modified the terms in here to be favorable to the county, but also not inequitable. So there are terms in here which allow the contractors to get equitable adjustments if the prices of materials or quantities change based on conditions. It's not an overly dangerous contract, but it protects the county. It gives the county the required notice, gives you the required authority to control the project. There are some tweaks and modifications which will need to be made in here that I can do work with David based on the particular project's needs. But generally speaking, I believe it's a better set of documents than what the EJCC produces. And it also has been brought to be in force with Texas law, where some of the provisions need EJCC documents or not in compliance with some of Texas's notice and bond provisions with respect to, still practicing where these kind of get. I'm happy to walk through it with you. On my copy, I've highlighted quite a number of terms that I think are worthy of a brief discussion, if you want to take the time to do that. Would you want me to just run through, just give a little look at?
Briefly.
Briefly, all right. So adding to what I've said and kind of using some of the examples of issues we've been dealing with on the jail and Black Topper and some other work we're doing. The contract requires the contractor to give us schedules at the outset of the job and with each application. He gives us the right, as we've been doing in the jail project, to make sure that we get all of the documentation that we need, including those schedules, before we have an obligation to pay. It allows us to use change directives. In the event there is change where it needs to be done, we can direct the contractor to do it. In order to emphasize efficiencies, it has written into the documents procedures for determining compensation if there is changes that need to be done by order as opposed to by negotiated and agreed pricing and change orders. It has a no damages for delay clause, so the contractors are allowed to get time for delay, but not money. With respect to the issues for Black Topper, the way this is structured, the contractor still retains the right to terminate if there's been a 90-day delay caused by the owner, but it requires them not to be able to do that until they've given us a 15-day notice and opportunity to cure the defect. And it says in the contract, and I'm looking specifically at Section 15.1, it says that if there is a delay, or we choose to suspend the work, we can suspend the work, but give the contractor contract time extensions, so that if there's a 90-day delay and the contractor sends us a notice and says you've got 15 days to cure, we can then compensate them by giving them 90 days additional time and prevent the opportunity for the contractor to try to terminate a project if we get into the same situation with Black Topper. It gives us the right to supplement their work, either with or without the declaration of termination. Once we hold them in to be in default, we can take over all or some of the work, which gives us a little bit more control, a little bit more rights to get work done if we find we're in a situation with a slow or non-performing contractor. Obviously, the considerations of cost come into play as a factual matter, but contractually you have the right to do so without necessarily having to call on the bonding company and terminate the contract. It also gives us the right to terminate portions of the work. It has a one-year warranty for workmanship. It excludes from the warranty wear and tear of oil usage to hopefully relieve some concerns that contractors like Black Topper might have when we're talking about road work, especially in this county with the oil traffic that picks up again. It's got very solid indemnification clause. It's got a significant emphasis on insurance in the event that we get to work with. We've got sufficient insurance to cover any potential damages or injuries to folks who might get hurt from a project. And it gives us the right to audit and the right for the engineer and the owner to audit and verify materials that are used, both from a pay application standpoint and from verification standpoint for making sure that we're charging the price and those are actually verified and confirmed before any amounts are paid. That's a general rundown of some of the changes or risks I've made in the contract. Any questions?
Any questions, comments?
Jeff, this is something that Mr. Underbrink thinks is workable in the industry?
Well, it's based on EJCC, and I haven't given it to David and discussed it with him.
We got to look at some of the interim things that he was doing, but it's significant for you guys, but I don't think it's going to affect the cost of bidding right now.
And also, it doesn't modify significantly the role of the engineer. The engineer can still be your project representative. The engineer still has discretion over all the design concerns and project management, and that's the role you give it.
Any other comments, questions?
I move that we approve the contract for revisions and modifications to the contracts for County Road 326 and County Road 182 as authored by Jeff Chapman.
A second. Any discussion for all that favor of the motion? Seat about raising your right hand. All of them safe sign, all looking forward to motion here. We don't have 17?
Yes.
Okay, which is review request for qualification for Road and Bridge Materials and Equipment Operators through pre-qualified approved suppliers through purchase order contracts authored by Jeff Chapman. I'm not sure we've got the wording right in that motion, but if it's not, we're okay.
Well, this doesn't require any action.
No, good.
We're good on the last one. I put this on here because when we met last month, I needed a couple of things from Road and Bridge in order to get these RFQs published. I got those last night and this morning. We've got, for all the materials that Road and Bridge buys, based on their budget announced that exceed $50,000, I have a list from Mike, that we're going to use, and we advertise for these RFQs for materials. And then I believe we even, we also have some items in there that exceed $25,000 a year, some which may or may not, like tires. They've spent $20,000 thus far, I think through March, I guess. And that's, it probably will be $25,000 for the year, we don't know, but we're going to go ahead and bid for that anyway. For all the equipment we're using, such as the equipment we use to get the roads ready for the seal code program, we're issuing up an RFQ with the company and some list of equipment we need for that. So just to let, the reason this is on here is to let you all know that as of yesterday and this morning, we know that we need to advertise for these, and I'll work with David, and we'll get these published and advertised, so that hopefully we'll get responses back before the end of August. And then September, we can begin issuing purchase orders based on what was left in the budget for this fiscal year. And then we can use these going forward for the next fiscal year based on the pricing and the agreements that our suppliers will have agreed to. And that way, we'll be in compliance with procurement, that we will have bid all these purchases, and we'll have the opportunity to use the submitted vendors. In the absence of a vendor for a pure item, then we'll have to default back to the buy board or individual purchases if they don't exceed $25,000. The only issue that I'm aware of right now with Road and Bridge, and Mike can comment on this as well, is that they need fuel, and Mike projects it's about a $60,000 expenditure for that. And he thinks that I need that before, I guess, maybe immediately. And so we can advertise and get the authorization to purchase that before the end of this month, unless there's an actual emergency, then we can qualify for exemption from the procurement provisions. And that depends on what the fuel being used for, whether it actually is being used to protect and preserve public property. If it's being used to protect and preserve public property, then I believe it qualifies for the exemption, so you don't damage or further degrade public property. But that's the determination that is factual, and we need to have some questions about that. Having said that, once these things go out or received in back, we'll be able to purchase fuel and other equipment and materials in compliance with the code.
That was my concern, that if you're successful, I think you will be with Black Topper, you know, to prepare those roads again, we'll need those bids back, because if they say a September timeline, then we're going to be...
Right. We're going to need, the contract is available in September, probably middle of September to get those roads ready. And if we get these published first thing next week, which we will, then we'll have the answers back by the end of August, and we can engage the contract as first part of September.
I don't know how you prepared your fuel purchasing. I've talked to a couple of fuel suppliers, and I think we'll get a, the county will get a better price if it's a rack plus rather than a firm price, because with the volatility in the fuel markets, they're going to put a lot of cushion in there if you hold them to a firm price.
Well, and the way it's bid right now is based on annual projections. So the budget is what governs the quantity we're asking for, and it just depends on what the vendors want to do as far as kind of back us with their pricing. If they want to offer us a fixed price for the year, and they'll honor that, then we can choose to use that or not. If we feel like we can get a better price using smaller increment purchases as needed that don't exceed the requirement for advertising, or we can use, and we agree to use the buy board, which is set up for those types of purchases, then we can do that. It just depends on what the vendors want to do. If the vendors don't want to take the risk of giving us a price that's good for the year, essentially annual fuel contract, or they're going to do so, but they're going to pad the numbers because of volatility, then we can choose not to make that purchase. We're not agreeing to enter into any contract by publishing these RFQs. What we're doing is we're getting an agreement by a vendor to sell us on an as-required basis using terms and contracts that we've already published.
Okay, in other words, you're just, okay, you're not buying anything, you're just setting the ground rules.
We're setting the table. We're setting the table so that when we do buy, we're in compliance with the code.
Do we need to take any action?
No, I told you, I told you, update.
Okay. That's all of your performance today?
That's it.
Thank you.
As far as I know.
All right, thank you. Item 18 is the next item on the agenda. Discuss, approve, Fall City National Bank as depositor for Orange County authored by me, and I think that was just my secretary not knowing who was authoring this.
What I've done is given y'all a copy of the negotiated offer from Fall City National Bank, who is our current depository, and off to the... And off to the left, I have indicated what our rates are currently as compared to what their offer is for time deposits of $100,000 or more for any deposit over 31 days. Currently, our interest rate is 0.3 percent. Their proposed negotiated rate is 0.2. The same amounts apply to $100,000 over 91 days, over 182 days, or over one year. On any time deposits less than $100,000, the interest rate per annum would be 0.10 for over 31 days, over 91 days, over 182 days, or over a year. Currently, that rate is 0.2. Under item 3, for wire transfers, our current agreement with the depository is a $20 fee for outgoing. They are adding a $10 fee for incoming wires. Those wire fees will come into effect with our outside investments. We move monies by wire rather than by physically mailing checks. Item H, they have added to this current depository negotiation, ACH payroll direct deposit services for employees, no matter if they deposit with the chosen depository or not, will be $35 monthly. So that will be a $35 fee that the bank will charge for processing direct deposits. That's not included on our current contract. Other than that, all items remain the same. Our current contract expires at midnight tonight. So we sure would like a approval to this.
I move that we go ahead and approve Falls City National Bank as a depository for Corinth County.
And authorize the judge to settle.
Sign it, execute the document, and be caught the file with the county clerk.
I second that.
I have problems with this every time we talk about it because I'm on the board of the Corinth County National Bank. Who's not involved in this, I don't think. Are they in any way involved, Corinth County?
The only way they are involved is because we have the subdepository authorization to utilize them for the fee clearing account.
Which I don't like. And I don't think they ought to have with me being on the board. And I can't get you all to change it, or have been able to at this point in time. I just don't think there ought to be anything with me involved on the board of the bank. I suppose I can disqualify myself, which I've been doing internally at the bank, from being involved. But it just smells like something bad to me. If it were somebody else on this group of commissioners, I would think something bad if they were on a bank board that was trying to do business in any way with the county. And I don't think, I don't think Corinth County Bank ought to be doing any business with, I don't think the county ought to be doing business with the Corinth County Bank. With that said, y'all go ahead and do what you want to, and I won't take any part in the rest of it.
I have accounts with both Falls City and Corinth City Banks. I don't feel any conflict of interest for me.
I'll show you the years, but go ahead.
There's a motion and a second.
Whoever is going to preside on that, I have to disqualify myself.
We have a motion and a second to approve the item 19 of Falls City Bank as a depository. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. We have three in favor and one abstention. Motion passes.
Didn't you say item 19?
Item 18.
I'm sorry. Okay, is that finished?
Yes, it is.
Okay, well, then we're two out of 19 now. Discuss approved Corinth County EMS dedication plaque. $1,889 traded to delete the plaque or select verbiage for the plaque. I'm not sure that that's all stated properly authored by all right, David. Florin?
Yes, sir. Good morning. I brought this to the attention of Commissioners Court because on the jail, it was concerned on the names on the plaque. Typically, the building plaque has the county seal along with the elected officials that are in office on the plaque, along with the contractor and the architect. The plaque is $1,889. The county can just take the credit for that. Or I need to know what the county wants to have on the plaque. I attached in your packet a copy of the email from the contractor with the credit along with the names of the commissioners and the county judge off of the website if you choose to have the plaque made and you want those names on the plaque. I just need direction on what the county prefers.
I suppose I would say was the decision of the court. I personally don't care whether my name's on these things. And I'm not sure why that's even a problem, but perhaps y'all want y'all's names before the public. Other members speak up.
The last time we did this, and personally, I don't mind if you delete it and keep the money, but if it becomes incumbent that the plaque is on there, I think Shelby suggested on the jail it be built by the citizens of Corinth County or something like that. So I think that would be more than adequate.
That sounds, that's who paid. No question about it, this group is not paying the commissioners and the judges.
Corinth County EMS building built by the citizens of Corinth County?
Well, do you want to make that a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion, Pete, anything? And I don't have anything except for the motion. All in favor of the motion, signify raising your right hand. All voting for it. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, sir. That's finished with item 18.
Okay, we're down to twenty. That's your food.
Yes, sir. This is for change order number three, an extended architectural engineering services for weather delays for the Corinth County EMS facility. In your packet, you have a change order number three from North Star along with a letter from DSA on the time extension and what that does for our extended additional services for construction administration. And then I have a chart recap that shows the approved budget that was approved by Commissioners Court on March the 11th of 2015 and how this will affect the budget so that you can see where those funds can come out of. There is room in a budgeted line item that the services could come from. Essentially, we have more weather delays and then the coordination of the fire line with the easement and getting in the fire line now that we know the county is going to go forward with the easement, and they're working on finalizing that. It's a total of 19 days that need to be added to the contract. Previously, we had the weather delays for the previous months. And the new contract completion date is December the 28th with the wood change order number three. It does not change the price of the contract, the contract stays the same. It's an extension of days for weather beyond what was in the contract. This does extend the services for one month. As the architect, we have to continue to come out from November 27th, the original date, to December 28th. That amount is $2,541. If you look at the chart, we have an item G is AE reimbursable expenses. The budgeted amount was $20,000. We have, actual amount to date is $8,000. So we're not going to be reaching that $20,000 amount. And that's what I would propose is the, that $2,000 could be budgeted out of those reimbursable expenses that we won't be incurring. Being able to go to all three projects at the same time does save the county money in reimbursable expenses. And so that's why we're not going to be getting to the $20,000 that was originally budgeted.
I see no problem with this. Keep an architect on the job, so I'll make a motion that we approve this change order.
Second. Motion and second that we approve the change order as proposed. Which is exactly what?
Change order number three is for the weather delays and extended contract times.
How much money?
$2,541.
Well, there's actually two items. Change order number three extends the days to completion of December 28th for the contractor with no additional cost. And then the additional services for us to service those days is the $2,000, as you were saying, Commissioner, $2,541.
$2,541?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? And is that, is that a motion that you made, Pete?
Yes, I have a motion, Shelby says.
I'm second by Shelby. Is there any other discussion by court members? Can we approve all of the various motion signified, raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign. All voting for it. Go ahead.
Item 21 is corrective measures for the Corinth County EMS facility. I brought a 11 by 17, which is a little bit larger than what was printed in your packet. I need to see the, this is the existing Corinth County EMS civil plan, the grading plan. And what occurred recently when the building pad was, the building foundation was placed, is it became obvious that the building is 1.25 feet too high. That happened when the surveyor went out to give the contractor the benchmark, and he gave him the wrong benchmark. So we have a building pad that's 1.25 feet higher than what the civil engineer designed to be placed. So that involves reworking of the grades. And as you can see on the site plan, everything is very, very tight. There's not a lot of room just to fudge and deal with the water. A new survey was provided by the contractor to our civil engineer. And Mike Luci, our civil engineer, is here, and Ted with North Star is here if you have additional questions after I give you an overview of the, of our proposed corrective measures. Mike Luci, the civil engineer, received the survey, I believe it was Wednesday afternoon and Thursday morning. We had some problems with the second survey that was provided, and there were things that didn't line up, and that was worked through with the civil. So he has a survey that he can work from. He's going to need to work all day today and all weekend, and hopefully on Monday have a revised grading plan for the contractor to move forward with. What's being proposed on that is the water that's draining from the, from the south, from the trailer park area, needs to, originally it was to drain down the center line of the road that's behind the EMS building, and that's where you see that center line dash line taking the water out to the street. Now, if the building's too high, we need to raise that driveway. So now the driveway is going to be too high to drain the water. So what's being proposed, and Dennis Kelly has reviewed this with Mike, and he is in agreement with this if the court allows us to take this direction, is to go ahead and create like a French drain where that water will come down, will have a curve at the edge of the driveway and a French drain that will take the water out to the street. And then on the front of the building, that takes care of the problem in the back of the building and allows us to still keep the six-inch drop-off from the porch down to the driveway and a decent slope into your ambulance bays where you don't have too much of a cross slope. On the front of the building, we still have to deal with handicap. So there's rules, of course, on the amount of slope that we can have, and we have to have an accessible route for the handicap people to get out to the street according to Texas accessibility standards. So we're going to need to take the sidewalk that's in front of the EMS building, and instead of it being five feet wide, it needs to be four feet wide. And then we'll take a foot away from the parking area, which is still in compliance with parking regulations. And then we need to put a ramp on our property that will take a handicap person down to the street level and across to the sidewalk that's the public right of way. So those are our proposed solutions, the French drain with the high curve in the back, and then gaining two feet by reducing our sidewalk from five to four, taking a foot out of the parking, and then we'll have a ramp that will take the accessible, allow the accessible route down to the sidewalk.
What's a French drain?
French drain will be, Mike, do you want to explain what you want to do there? It's gravel packed with a...
Gravel with a pipe in it.
Gravel with a pipe in it, so the water will just collect and flow where it needs to flow. Go ahead.
Just when we, when we raise the driveway up, now we're blocking the water that's coming from the person that lives behind. Now the water's hitting that wall, so we got, it's going to drop down into the gravel.
They'll keep the water out of the Road and Bridge?
Like the, the water for Road and Bridge, because that's on...
It's going to come down to the building, and there's an inlet out on the highway. It's going to go on the backside of that inlet. It was originally going that way, just to go...
Does, does the French drain drain to a, to the street level, or does it drain to storm sewer?
I haven't figured that out yet. I'm hesitant now. I've got some elevation issues to work out. If I can't get the pipe, it may be too low. I may just run that gravel and just let it head out to the street here. If I can turn a pipe under the driveway and take it down, you know, towards the exit in daylight down there somewhere, then I'll do it that way. But I've got to go out there now. I've got the survey to figure out. See if you're lucky about it.
Well, I understand. I know it needs to be drained enough.
And the cost will be assumed by who?
The contractor. The contractor and the surveyor have to work this out because buildings take out just by the contractor and the surveyor.
Their mistake.
Yes, sir.
I move we approve the change on item 21 to take corrective measures at the EMS building due to the building elevation placement.
I second. Pete second. Here's a review of the discussion. All in favor of the motion signified, raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. All voting for a motion carried.
In your packet for item number 22, for the roof project, the courthouse roof project turret towers, construction materials testing, is a proposal from TSI Laboratories for the testing of the turret towers, the mortar, grout, and rebar inspections that need to be done and tested. There's four towers, and because of the logistics of, you know, the construction of the, of these towers, as well as requirements for how far you want to, how many courses you want to go up before you test, we're going to need to have four tests per tower. The contractor is combining as many of those tests as possible. The contractor is combining as many of those tests as possible. They've worked out a schedule with TSI Laboratories for the testing. And the testing for that work comes out to $7,867. The laboratory is hired by the owner because it is your quality assurance to protect you and do the testing of the work that's going in place by the contractor. The TSI originally left the turret tower testing out of their proposal to us. Uh, if you look on the last page, the first three pages of, of this item is TSI's proposal. The fourth page is the budget recap. If you look on line item L, we have $5,000 budgeted for this item. The proposal they gave us in April that was approved by the court was just for the, um, the masonry that was on the east base of the, of the new base brick that was installed. That was $1,091. Uh, we have $5,000 in the budget. So, the additional cost for the testing, I would propose come out of your project contingency, which has not been used. Um, item C, you have an $85,000 project contingency. The testing does need to be done. You want to be protected. You don't want any masonry, um, mortar or grout going in that, that doesn't meet strength requirements. And, and the testing is important. So, I would propose that we, um, allow them to do the $7,867 for the testing for the turret towers and use the project contingency, item C, to cover the difference in costs that we need from what was proposed in the budget on, uh, row L in the budget.
All right, these, these turrets are, um, structurally significant. And we do want them to be tested, be assured that they're stable when they're put up there. And since we do have money in contingency, I move that we accept this change order.
Were these in the original cost?
The turrets were, the turrets were the additive ultimate. And when the budget was put together, um, we'd go to the testing laboratory. We show them the plans and specs and we ask them to put together an anticipated budget. TSI gave us a budget of $5,000. It did not include, um, all of the turret testing that needs to be done. Once, should I say this correctly? When the turrets are constructed, if we only had to have two inspections per turret, the $5,000 would have covered it. Once the contractor mobilized and the contractor and the masonry contractor and the structural engineer discussed how many lifts is what they call it before, every time you pour the grout, you, you set your masonry, you set your rebar, and then you pour your grout. And each time you pour that grout, you want to test. It's requiring four instead of two. We had several discussions to try to get it down to two and, and it can't, it can't happen. The structural engineer wants the four. The mason doesn't feel comfortable doing less than four. We need four. So, we need to do the four and we have, these are allowances that we put in there. Everybody does their best to guesstimate what will need to be done. But sometimes you run into the project and you need to have additional testing.
Has this been coordinated with the Fisher firm that is the primary architect on the courthouse restoration?
As far as-
The, I mean, this part of the project or anything? Um, and we have two architects working on the same project, I guess. Maybe I'm wrong, but I know Fisher's doing something. And I'm just wondering how this all ties to, excuse me, how it all ties together? That, um, if, if Fisher's going to do the, the job, then is, is his firm being advised in this, I, you know, you got to bring me up to speed. I'm losing something here.
It is the same structural engineer.
Huh?
It is the same structural engineer.
It is the same structural engineer.
Yes, it's the same structural engineer. And these documents were developed by Mr. Graham Loon based on Mr. Fisher's 95% set of documents he originally had done. And we are working with the Texas Historical Commission, Tanya. And then she relays anything back to Mr. Fisher to keep everything cohesive for you.
I don't understand why this wasn't included in the original cost of the original plan.
The testing laboratory is always an allowance. And it's based on the testing laboratory. It's not a bid item. It's an allowance because this is a consultant that works for you. So, they review the plans and they come up with what they believe will be the allowance amount that will cover the testing that they need to do. When they get on the site, sometimes the procedures that are done by the contractor dictate how many tests have to be done. In this case, the two tests that they had included in their proposal needs to turn into four because of requirements from the structural engineer and how much work the mason can get done logistically. So, that's, that's where you are. You know, you can choose to do two tests and then you take a chance that they're, all four would be okay, but you're not testing all four. I recommend you test all four. It's, it's your choice. You have, you do have $85,000 in your contingency. And I think it's a, it's a well-spent, um, $3,500.
Why wasn't it in the original plan?
It's because it was an allowance. Allowances are not bid items. It is in the original plans, however, logistics-
I've been doing that 50 years. I hate to be that old, but I am.
Well, I can get, I can, the problem is we need to make a decision. It's going to hold up the contractor. I can get Gary with TSI Laboratories down here to talk to you about why his allowance was five thousand.
I just don't want to hear. Because y'all, y'all were just saying that you made a mistake in not having this in there.
I disagree, but I'm-
Well, of course you did. Because you're the one paying for it.
Sir, I'm a bit concerned that as the architect on this part of the roof, that she's not directly coordinating with Mr. Fisher, that there's going to be a conflict at some point in the future with something being done he's not aware of.
Do those counts involve the clock tower? Do either of those-
No, ma'am. They're the, the four round cylindrical turrets.
That's it on top of the roof. Fisher, Fisher's doing the clock, is that correct?
Yes. Luci will do the clock.
Well, my being unhappy is not going to stop it, of course. So, we will settle that on down the way. What is, does this require the court's approval at this point?
Yes, sir.
And what exactly are we approving?
What it amounts to is that the laboratory allowed to test four times. And the way the contractor decided that they needed to, need to be tested eight times.
That's not what you were saying, Pete.
So-
So, you're saying two and four, is it changed to four and eight now?
Two tests-
Per turret.
Two times per turret, or two times four is eight. So, therefore, to be safe, we can, as a court, we can decide not to pay for the other four tests and leave as is. And then the structural engineer will say, or the contractor will say, well, y'all didn't test four times as we wanted it to be tested. So, we'll be safe. So, therefore, I believe that we need to pay for these tests, another $3,500. So, we will be covered. The contractor can't say y'all didn't pay for the tests. There are allowances in here. This will come out of our $85,000 contingency fund. But we're spending other money in this project. So, therefore, I believe that we should pay for this out of our contingency and be assured that the contractor satisfied that we had the material tested and it's okay. So, I've made the motion that we pay for this. And I think someone seconded it.
Who seconded it? I didn't hear a second yet.
There wasn't, I wasn't thinking.
I'll go ahead and second it. I, I, I agree with Pete. I mean, we're, we're taking a chance if we don't do it. I realize it was missed the first time. That is unfortunate.
Well, it was missed by somebody that shouldn't be responsible for paying for it.
Shelby, you are here.
Your fault, Shelby.
How are we running money-wise on the project? Are we on target, below, above? Uh, that may make it a little more palatable.
We are on target. If you, if you look in the back of your, when you look at the TSI Laboratories at the back, I have the budget for you there. And none of the $85,000 has been used. The contractor is within his 1.18 million. And, um, and, you know, our reimbursable expenses on this one, we're only at $1,900 out of $25,000. So, you have, you have money that will be returned back to you at the end of this project on this budget.
Will this be all the testing that be required?
Yes, sir.
So, if I'm looking right on, on the page, uh, on TSI's page and last page at the number L, uh, so far to date, we've only spent $1,059 out of $5,000.
Yes, sir.
So, the remainder of the $5,000 in addition to make up the difference is just-
Yes, sir. We'll use up that $5,000 that's already budgeted. However, their proposal is for $7,867. So, that's, there's approximately $3,500 that need, $3,500 that needs to come out of the $85,000 budgeting contingency.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yes, sir.
I'll second that motion.
David already did. Shelby?
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Yes, I did. Go ahead.
No.
Any, any comments or anything else concerning the matter that we have a second, a motion and a second on? All in favor of the motion signified by raising your right hand? All opposed, same side? I, I just cannot vote for paying more money for something that shouldn't have tended to in the original plans, it seems like to me. And I don't know whose fault it was and don't care. But it's not Karnes County's fault. I know that. And I don't think we ought to pay for it, but we're going to. So, let's move on.
The next item that I have is additional extended architectural and engineering services for the Karnes County courthouse roof registration, uh, restoration project. These are services-
Phase 1B.
Yes, sir. Phase 1B. You should have a letter in your packet, again, with, um, with a copy of the chart showing the courthouse funds budget chart. Essentially, there were a number of items that the structural engineer ran into and the contractor ran into as they started demolishing the roof and taking off stucco on the walls. The, the letter here, um, at the end of your letter talks about the items that were run into that took an additional, an extensive amount of additional time by the structural engineer and DSA and the contractor coordinating and coming up with solutions and corrections for your building to continue on with the construction of the project. We had, um, numerous repairs that needed to be done to the east entry wall for the roof attachment, relocation of the historical chimneys, originally going back in their original place were conflicting with the gutter. And in consultation with, there was concern there that, um, that the architect brought up and discussed with the structural engineer as well as Texas Historical Commission. And the team agreed that putting the chimneys back in their original historical location was going to be a potential problem for leaks in the future. THC did agree to allow us to move the chimneys back, which took a, a more structural work that needed to be done. Um, you had existing roof trusses that were bearing on walls that were cracking to the point that we had to shore them up. They were literally very close to failing as well as, um, wall repairs related to that. And then strengthening of the portwood ceiling joists that were sagging. And so, the result of the additional time and engineering services for unforeseen conditions is a total of $8,990. And it's broken down in the letter that you have before you. And again, I would propose that this would be paid out of contingency funds or partially towards the reimbursable expenses that we're not going to get to that $25,000 that's budgeted.
Is that $85,000 contingency fund for the whole courthouse or just for the roof?
Just for the roof project, ma'am. And it's the owner's contingency. And it was put in there because on historical buildings, you run into things that, that are unforeseen, that you don't know.
What exactly? What exactly do you need, Dan?
Approval of the additional services.
Is there a motion?
I saw a move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to move, well, motion and a second to pay for the additional services that apparently nobody could foresee, which I don't believe. But, uh, that's what we're hearing. All in favor of the motion signified by-
Judge, just a second. Where are you going to take it from, Pete? She's made two suggestions.
Contingency.
Contingency or the reimbursable?
From reimbursable.
Okay.
Where it should come from?
If there's money in the reimbursables, yes, sir. That's fine.
From reimbursable.
Which item is it?
H on your sched, last page schedule.
Okay. I'll, I'll, this one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. To be taken from that $25,000 reimbursable expense. What does reimbursable mean? Does anybody understand?
I think that would be-
That's what you get paid back for?
Yeah, travel and various other things like that.
Which we're not going to get paid back anything for. We're going to pay for it.
Lunch and shorties.
Well, that'd be a cheap place, probably. We'd be lucky that it go on, Thor's Hill or something down here, apparently. Uh, there's a motion before the court, uh, and a second to, all in favor of the motion signified, raising your right hand? All opposed, same side? Motion's through to Wood Park, carries. Move on.
Okay, the next item is change order number two for the roof project as well as the, um, extended architectural and engineering services for the additional time that's required for the chimney modifications. This is a no-cost change order for the contractor, change order number two, that adds 30 calendar days to the project. As I briefly discussed earlier, or presented earlier, that the chimney placement to go back historically, um, was not the best solution for Karnes County. And as we, we did get THC to agree that relocating those chimneys out of that gutter is a better solution for you, even though it's not 100% historically correct, which is what they normally like to do. The concern was that we had is putting those gutters back. The chimneys fell down for a reason. We don't know what that reason is, but one of the reasons could be improperly flashed in that gutter. And, um, and there was a concern from the project team. Everybody did agree that it would be the best solution for Karnes. The, um, it is going to take the contractor another 30 days though to, to achieve the new, uh, location for the chimneys. There's no cost to the contractor. Uh, it gives him 30 days. Your construction contract amount stays the same. The extended services for, um, DSA architects, taking it from the September 14th date. We had a change order number one previously that extended, um, 16 days to the contract because of the bees and, um, uh, unforeseen conditions that the contractor ran into on the walls. And that was change order one that was already approved by the court. The total, um, extension is six weeks with change order one and two, which resulted $8,227 of, um, for 45 more days of architect and engineer on site. So, I would propose that be taken out of the project contingency. So I would propose that be taken out of the project contingency.
Right in your letter, it says September 14th to October 23rd, 2015. But in the document, I read change order for October 29th.
It should be 29. Yes, sir. I apologize. It takes you to the 29th.
Okay. This letter right here says... It should be 29.
It will take you through this change order.
Maybe I say 29, because if he goes right here, I might be getting there.
They're in a motion yet. Excuse me, they're in a motion yet. And I will tell you, I'll vote for it, but you need not come back with too many more of these.
Yes, sir.
I think you're about to hit the wall.
We've uncovered everything. I don't believe there will be.
How much?
Eighty-nine hundred, pedestrian.
It's not... It's not that if I call him.
Well, yeah. Eighty-two hundred, excuse me.
Is there a motion?
I'll go ahead and...
I don't touch them.
I'll stick my neck out. A move that we approve, item 24 courthouse restoration, phase 1B, change order two, extending the architectural and engineering services for chimney modifications.
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. It'd be taken from the contingency fund, excuse me.
All in favor of the motion signified by raising your right hand? All opposed, same side? Most three to one, carries.
And like I say, this isn't a threat, but like I say, next time, it's going to be pretty hard to vote yes for it.
We're about at 25?
Yes, sir. This is final.
Go ahead.
The final item that I have is the antiquities permit that needs to be signed for the Texas Historical Commission. Tanya brought to our attention that it was not ever signed. And so we have filled it out. It needs to be signed by your architect and a representative from Kearns County.
A move that we allow Judge Long to sign the application to this Texas Historical Commission for Antiquity Historic Building Instructors Part of Kearns County Roof Project... Roof Restoration Project Phase 1B. And it'd be filed with the county clerk.
I say.
Judge, you can vote for this one. We ain't spending no money.
I mean, this wicked bill. I'm telling you, why would it be filed with the county clerk?
Because it's something we're signing as part of the court. I just think it should... This is the document right here.
We're having trouble keeping a record of what goes on. I realize Carol's file may be getting pretty thick, but...
You got a file that you file documents that don't belong anywhere?
Yes, I do.
Well, good, okay. I've been looking 50 years at this.
I think it's a shredder.
I think that's the problem. Maybe I've been having that I didn't know where that file was, that she's got stuck back somewhere. And she didn't stick it back, she just inherited it. All right. All in favor of the motion signified by raising your right hand? And all opposed, same side? Three to one, for motion carries. Any item, bring it to 25?
Yeah, 26.
26. Discuss approved, this approved this to lease the fiber optic services to county buildings in Kearns City by AT&amp;T for a cost of approximately $3,300 monthly on a three-year contract presented by Art Floris offered by TGR.
I think the court members all aware that we've gone back several times on that art procedure. Just to take us back in time a little bit to refresh our memory, we have there some time. Initially, we started the conversation with Chris LaPorte of AT&amp;T, part of their gem division that handles the municipalities. They're bidding you, I think you have a brand idea there, for services to pull fiber to all your county buildings. That will give you... I would like to say that the monthly cost is not negotiated. That is Chris's initial offer to the county. So in this process, we would expect to understand what we can do with costs as far as bandwidth required for the software. They would give you the infrastructure and the land to have campus facility with all your county buildings, with fiber touch and everybody. And the ability to use broadband services.
Does this affect the T1s or that are used for phone for voice only? Or does it affect the U-verse accounts that are currently...
In place? So it would replace those.
It'll replace the T1s.
And it would replace the infrastructure. So your T1s and your U-verts are coming in on copper infrastructure. As you may have experienced, copper can have issues that are due to weather or environment. And fibers not as susceptible to those issues.
So then we will not be required to have T1s for voice any longer, which is what we have now that connect all our buildings.
Correct. Part of this process is negotiating with AT&amp;T to exit those contracts and to add this new infrastructure.
That was my question. The words, this is both data and voice transmission.
Correct. The infrastructure. So I'm not saying the price point is, we'd love to negotiate that, but yes.
The system, correct.
Correct.
Well, has the price not been negotiated yet?
No, sir.
Say what you see.
Correct. What I've... Alls I've done so far with AT&amp;T, all I've done, I mean, I've talked to them, I've met them out here, we've gone over the addresses, we've talked about the lead desire to have the city have a campus environment. One of the topics that came up during our work at the jail was getting fiber over to the jail. That initiated AT&amp;T to recognize that their infrastructure here in your county is long overdue for upgrades, not only from the infrastructure perspective, but on the switch-in. And Chris leading that charge to bring these new products and services to you guys.
Well, that included the new EMS building as well?
Well, it's in Kennedy, that's not here. We're just concentrating...
Just in Kearns City.
I...
It said all county buildings, I'm just wondering.
No, it says in Kearns City, I think. And all... And I apologize. So all county buildings, the addresses that was provided, that I've worked with AT&amp;T on delivering services to.
Okay. You're right, Pete, I'd say Kearns City, but I heard all county buildings, that's not maybe.
I misspoke, but I can always ask AT&amp;T to include that. I wouldn't say it's out of the question, just don't have it included, Mr. Grant.
And the $3,000 figure that's included here is what you believe can be negotiated with AT&amp;T?
Correct. And just keep in mind, Commissioner, this is something that they're charging you in lieu of the construction cost. So the monthly cost and the duration of the monthly cost is directly correlated to the cost of their construction to do the boring and break the fiber to each building.
Well, how does this compare to what the county is? I realize that service is supposed to be a lot better, or at least I understand it is, but how does it compare to what our communications and data transmission system is costing us now? Now, do you have any thought?
Well, I'm not sure what our cost will be after we have the cable, the fiber optic installed. I was looking to see what we have in this cycle for T1 lines. I don't think we have anything in this billing cycle. So I can't tell you that right off the top of my head, David.
Okay.
Just to answer your question, Commissioner, we would examine side-by-side costs and look at what you're paying for. Again, just to...
But examining it and looking at it doesn't say that it's going to be cheaper to us.
I can guarantee it won't be cheaper than what you're paying now. I can guarantee you're going to...
Well, it won't be cheaper than anything if you're just looking at it.
Well, in examining it, Commissioner, we're going to work with AT&amp;T to make sure that we're incorporating all the bandwidth needed for softwares, product sets, looking forward as far as the vision of the county, how you're going to treat your technology. As I mentioned before, one of the best reasons to advocate for this move is to be ready and staged for future technol... Or how do you future current technologies? So with your T1s in place, it doesn't make sense to go with any cloud-based technology that saves you money on hardware purchases. And it kind of goes on and on and on from there. We can look at... I won't use the word examine, but we can look at and compare and negotiate with AT&amp;T what you have today and what you want to move towards. As long as it fits their model to their cost of their construction, that's what we have to make sure we punch in.
Who exactly do you work for?
I'm Art Floris with ArtCom. I'm 49% ownership with the company.
Okay. And there are other companies that do this same thing. You're just a...
I am one of many.
Okay.
And he has come on board with the county because of his association with getting fiber to the jail.
Does that help us get it cheaper? What?
I would think AT&amp;T would help someone you would contact and would come out and do essentially what this gentleman here is doing.
At no cost or more cost? Who knows?
They're going to get a monthly charge every month when you buy their product.
From them?
Yes, sir.
And from AT&amp;T also?
Yes, sir. I would think.
Commissioner, may I address that?
Sure.
Okay. So you're absolutely right. AT&amp;T will assign a project manager, a project of this magnitude. However, it'll be one of several projects that they're working on. And I would just... I always remind my clients to remember the human factor. People go on vacation, people transition from jobs. My experience with AT&amp;T and other providers is you don't always get what's in the best interest of the end user in the end product.
So you're going to have a different way of contacting that person? Can you guys contact that person?
I don't know if it would be different. I think it would just be more consistent and more in line with what we've dealt with other clients and ensure success. So what I mean is coming into your building, making sure the infrastructure is on the timeline and in the spatial requirement that is given them, that the bandwidth that they're bringing in, the routers and services will match what we've negotiated.
What would the county be getting for the $3,300? Is that just the service? You know, to me, that's the phone bill, but obviously I'm wrong that that's not the phone bill, that there's something on top of it in addition to the $3,300 a month.
Well, the $3,300 a month is what Chris LaPorte put forward as the initial monthly recurring cost for the addresses. But the one thing I don't know, and we discussed this last time too, is I don't understand what your bandwidth requirements are for the network. And I know I'm jumping ahead on the docket here, but on item 28, talking about IT services, we do have to do a deep dive to truly understand what softwares you're using and what hardware is in place and what's necessary to go back and get that cost very precise. Then I can understand the jail has 100 meg requirement, whereas the tax office mainly have a 10 meg requirement, or less.
So technically, this estimated monthly cost over three-year period is AT&amp;T's proration of their cost of pulling the fiber.
Correct.
We'll have our phone bills on top of it, we'll have our long distance on top of it, et cetera.
Well, long distance is treated differently now than what you're traditionally used to. I know you have the metro products over here, because you are 200. You have the opportunity, and this is part of the deep dive, you have the opportunity to look at SIP, which eliminates all the costs moving forward, and that rides on your bandwidth, so you wouldn't have a phone bill per second. I don't know if you guys want to go into what SIP trunks are, but they essentially are your phone lines right in the internet. And you won't have any dial tone products that you use specifically for fire systems, security systems, or any other systems that require analog dial tone.
And how does that affect phone service if your internet's down?
Well, on the fiber, if you're completely down. On your fiber with AT&amp;T's contract, they have a verbage common in all their contracts. You don't have five lines redundancy and your SLA, which means your service level agreement will give you your minimum response time to get you back up. But again, the fiber infrastructure, I have very few clients that experience three downtimes with the services we maintain.
Many of your clients are rural, like Kearns County?
Well, I've done work for Pleasanton, doing work for Kennedy ISD right now. So I mean, you know, Florisville brought Time Water Fiber into their schools for them. They were closer, it was cheaper. So, you know, different providers, but same process.
Same magnitude or greater?
Some greater, some less.
What kind of timeline would be involved? Do you have any idea for AT&amp;T to actually get the fiber done?
I have not gone that far with Chris. I do not know what it would be. I would, conservatively, at 1050 days.
And start then.
Are there other entities that provide the same service? I'm asking you.
Are you asking me?
Yes.
Can I defer that to an AT&amp;T person? Where'd he go?
Just when you need him.
I'm sure there are. Like I said, Art got involved because he was the one that utilized... Was utilized for the jail. Correct.
Did anybody on the court look for anybody else? Or we just...
I do not.
Looks like to me we owe our people in our community the obligation to explore other... Other companies.
Robert, do you know of... Do you know of other companies? You've been to other places. Do you know of other companies that provide the same services as AT&amp;T does here?
I'm sure there is, Commissioner, but I don't... I don't know anybody in the local area that would be able to do it for you. I'm sure there's some in San Antonio and different places, but off the top of my head, I do not.
Judge, maybe...
What did you say?
Yes, sir. Look about the use of Wi-Fi hotspots. I use one out at the ranch, and I can sign it to be instantly connected to the internet or anyplace else I need to go. I think the issue, Judge, when we talked last time during the workshop, was just that the internet was for service in all the buildings, and we were just trying to break up the infrastructure. And that's why Art was asked to take a look at that, to see, not necessarily choose Art or whatever, but we just needed someone to give us some guidance as far as getting our infrastructure up, because it was causing a problem with the alarm system here and a lot of different other issues. And since Art was at the jail already, I think the decision was made just to have you look at it, see what it was. And I think that's why he was brought here, not specifically just to give him the business, but if the court chose to do that, then that's why he was put on there. But we're looking for somebody to bring fiber into our buildings, and Art had that expertise in order to get it done. So whether the court wants to get a different provider or not, that's up to you guys. But that's why Art was actually asked to do that, because he did the design and the necessary details with AT&amp;T for the new jail. And that's basically where we're at today, is how it got here. So does he want to put campers in those other...
Is this a... Is this an item that we can... We can order or make a deal for somebody doing this for a three-year contract? And that's more money than we should be paying somebody for one thing, it seems to me.
I think he went, Judge, if I understand the process right, I think he went to AT&amp;T and said, what would it cost to get fiber into these buildings to upgrade the county's infrastructure? And I think that's where that dollar amount came. The AT&amp;T rep said, he went and looked at it, said, this is what it's going to take and this is what it's going to cost. And I think that's where we're at. But whether... To answer your question, whether the court wants to go that route or just spending that money or not, that's...
Well, $3,300 a month for 12 months is, what, $39,600? So we're obligating for three years, which is 100 and something dollars, which is more than we should be making a contract for.
And I think that's what Luanne brought up a while ago, when she said that basically we're paying for AT&amp;T to install that into our buildings. We're just absorbing their costs, Judge, that's what that is.
She has to hit me between the eyes to make me understand all the technical stuff about a phone person particularly.
Basically, AT&amp;T is...
And she married one, and, you know, I understand where it's coming from.
Basically, AT&amp;T is saying it's going to cost 100 and something dollars to get cable to all our buildings. If y'all wanted this, it's what it's going to cost per month. That's the bottom line.
And instead of fronting the money, they're giving you a payout.
That's right. It's a payment plan like a Sears and Roebuck deal. If you want this, you pay this per month, and that's the way it is. Or you can pay it all up at one time.
Is that accurate?
It is. And the number AT&amp;T actually floated immediately, Chris LaPorte, was around a half a million to build the facilities for you guys to do the land with the boring, street patching, everything else included. That's what the number you told me.
That's what.
AT&amp;T, you had mentioned AT&amp;T... But AT&amp;T, you had mentioned AT&amp;T said they're covering their costs with this contract.
Yeah.
The cost that I was given verbally for Chris LaPorte with AT&amp;T, an AT&amp;T employee, was around half a million, the full of fiber to all the facilities.
So then, once all this is paid out, and I'm hitting you between the eyes, okay?
Sure.
My understanding is we will still have, we will still have monthly payments. This is just to get the facilities equipped with fiber optics.
But the monthly payments, Luanne, would be just like you got regular cable service, right? A regular U-verse service, like we're paying now.
There's the man that knows. Tell us something, then.
I, in all my years of working for AT&amp;T, I never knew that AT&amp;T charged anybody to go to their building. AT&amp;T had to provide what you wanted to your building from the access building point inside. That was up to you. But I, you know, I've been retired for good three years now, so that may have changed. You know, AT&amp;T always had to provide the service to your building without any cost. I called Robert Zepeda, who's still working for them, and he says in Kennedy that Aquilon now has fiber optic cable, that new apartment, just an apartment complex there on Ennui Road. They put fiber optic cables to that apartment complex. I wouldn't, I don't want to overtalk what I'm saying, but I don't think they would charge. I don't know.
Should we do a request for proposal thing?
Do what?
Is this where we should do a request for proposal, RFP or RFQ, where are you gonna call it? For fiber optics?
But it's still gonna have to come through AT&amp;T, because they are the provider here in the county city anyway.
I was gonna say that.
You're right. Well, you know where I was going with that.
And, you know, I'm so far in the past, but years ago, there were above-ground phone lines, then there were buried phone lines. Now, I'm assuming this fiber optics you're talking about is also buried somewhere out there, and they just connect it in here?
I would assume so.
It could be buried or, or just like your copper cables.
It is.
It's just a way of getting it to your building.
Okay.
I think we need to look into it further.
A little more research probably wouldn't hurt.
And Judge, if I may just address the point, he's absolutely right. AT&amp;T does have an obligation to bring facilities to each building. They satisfied that by bringing the copper infrastructure. So Randall Stevens, the new CEO of AT&amp;T, has a new mandate where he's trying to eliminate all copper platform products. And so putting fiber to the buildings is a directive, but he's also wrapping the cost into the actual service contract and the duration of the service contract. So I was an LVP at AT&amp;T, had a few years there myself. It's a totally different company in the last five, six years. My mom retired from it 35 years. So what I would share with you is this. The reason why counties, private entities, pay us to manage this process is because there aren't, hasn't been as much attention to detail for the end user, and that's why companies like me exist. I don't only do the consulting project management piece, but we also do the infrastructure. That's what I feel like we did at the jail. But we have a whole perspective of looking at the county, how you want to do it. I completely agree and understand if you want to bet or RFP this. I just, I keep hearing you ask about providers, and I'm the vendor side. So to my knowledge, and I may be wrong, but I don't think I am, AT&amp;T is the only one that has services out here in this neck of the woods. So I don't think we're in a position to go RFP for providers, because I don't think anyone's gonna haul.
You don't think they're gonna run in here and just do business with good people?
Sorry, Judge, I don't think so.
Well, you're probably right.
Time Warner's not rushing to get here.
No.
But it is plausible to bid out my, my, my business, and it would just be doing a scope of work of what we're gonna do for the dollar.
Okay, I hear you. I appreciate what you're saying to us, but I think we have an obligation to our taxpayers to investigate this.
No problem.
And make sure we're doing the right thing with the, with their money.
I think until, until there is a total cost for service comparison, that to this, it's almost a moot point with the, you move forward, whether it be with Art or with anyone else. And I'll be honest, I don't know how to develop that. But in addition, like you say, to the $3,300, assuming that's a figure that is going to have to happen, we still have to deal with the monthly bill. And I realize that, you know, I'm used to thinking minutes, he's talking bandwidth or something there akin. So somehow or the other, though, there's gotta be a comparison, i.e. right now, we're paying out $10,000 a month for phone service. And if you do this and pay out $3,300 a month, then the phone service is only gonna cost you another three or whatever. So there's a monthly or annual figure that we can back up to. Now, I'm not mortally opposed to looking at the fiber optics. I know enough to know that's probably a way to go. But again, I think it will require a little bit more legwork to find out the exact economics of it.
And if I can just reiterate this one point, so this, this does give you the infrastructure for services, but AT&amp;T did offer also in my initial conversations where you can use it for your internal land. So it's not like a true house cable, you know, feeding a building. It's actually a house cable bringing in bandwidth products that you can use, the dial-up products you can use, but also an opportunity for the county to utilize that as a land or local area network to connect your other buildings together. The buildings that were on the list of addresses that I worked on, connecting.
So you could set a central receptionist up and the phone calls all go there, and the lady punches a button and goes to clerk's office, to this office, to that office.
90% of the time, it's how I justify my costs by not having to hire that human being.
My concern is on a three-year contract, though, can you, we do one year at a time, right?
You cannot obligate tax dollars for more than a 12-month period.
More than, more than a year?
All right, my, my concept with this is, is why AT&amp;T even want $3,300 a month, that they, you know, they should just put that fiber optic in free. They want a contract, so they're gonna get paid back something for it. All right, suppose they put this in for a plant out here, and they didn't, and they had a one-year contract, and just paid for one year, and then they said, "Oh, we can get satellite cheaper, we're just gonna cut yours off." They want a three-year contract, because they're gonna spend some money to put it in. I can understand that.
I understand.
Because they're in business too, so.
But my, my question, my question was, Pete, is that the three, I ain't got a problem with fiber optics. I really, I'm, I'm in favor of fiber optics. My, the thing was, could we obligate taxpayers' dollars on a three-year contract? Or that adds up to my question to Luanne, is that, because she says that we could, we only do a year at a time. I don't, you know, my question was, could we do a three-year contract?
They've got it with dollars, we've got it with, we've had contracts.
But we also have clauses in those contracts that if the funds aren't there, we are not obligated. For some reason, we would not have adequate tax revenues. We are not obligated, those are, can be canceled. I don't think there's gonna be a cancellation clause from AT&amp;T.
Well, your cancellation will be you pay the duration of the contract. And the things I looked at with AT&amp;T, I know, I'm just answering your question. So they weren't offering a one-year option. When I talked to Chris initially, they were offering a three and a five. So it got worse from there, so I stuck in the three, is what I've understood.
I was trying to keep them, right?
Eventually, though, AT&amp;T will have fiber out at the rural areas, whether it's a business requesting it or not. The question is, it's too costly for us to wait for a possible 15-year down the road.
You need to run your programs now.
Well, you know, Luanne, you mentioned the gentleman back there spoke about all the new facilities in Kennedy. I mean, I hit the nail on the head, if they're new, that's why it's a jail. There wasn't anyone pushing for fiber, and why, I said, "Why aren't we?" And I did it more of a, as a case study, for you guys to see that it could be done and in an efficient way, and you can get the services you need. And it all started, revolved around the AA COG requirements with what they need. I'm not 100% sure what they needed before, but that's what they said they needed, and the reason why copper wasn't going to work, it wasn't. But the fiber's here, I know what you guys are mistaken. The fiber's here, they can pull fiber to your buildings tomorrow. And for that gentleman's credit, they will assign a PM to you. You won't, you're not gonna be left in the woods as far as knowing management. My, my position and my statement and why we're successful is because we manage that implementation process, from price point to location to delivery date. And that may sound minimal to that gentleman, but I can just tell you from experience, City of San Antonio has a consultant, oh, I'm part of the consultant for them in the City of San Antonio. And we don't, I'm gonna be in Conroe on Monday. This is something that is done widely, and because it's so time-consuming. If you don't have somebody dedicated to this, it will eat your lunch. And I promise you, that's not a sales tactic, it's a true statement. It is, you have to stay on top of these folks to make sure they're not hindering any services, interrupting services, cutting off your existing services while they're implementing the ones and the transition from the old to the new.
In negative comment against AT&amp;T, and having lived with that gentleman for the number of years I have, and the complaints there are, I have had an email out to our local rep from AT&amp;T for over 10 days with zip response.
Is that Kevin Clark?
Sean somebody.
Okay. Kevin Clark's your director, and I have not heard from him after six months of communication. I had to go with two levels above to Chris LaPorte to get this meeting.
Well, it, it's really sad, and it's very sad too, that technically AT&amp;T has the monopoly in Corrins County right now. And because the jail, now Aquilon is not a new facility. They are an existing facility, so I don't know if they had to pay something to get fiber. But it's sad that they will service new entities, because the jail cost us nothing. They ran it.
Absolutely. I coordinated that process, I put in about 40 hours, making sure. I met him down there initially for that survey. I think I met with Pete, but maybe it was Lorraine who talked about the post office barriers. I mean, there is, I'm not just gonna sit in my office taking emails for this money. We're gonna be here talking about rights of rights, right of ways and occurrences, and figure out how we can get to these buildings. I mean, there are, there will be hurdles, they will be overcome, but it does, you can't do it over the phone. We have to come here and discuss that.
If, if this isn't inappropriate, if you look one line down, where the next thing was to evaluate design needs for the buildings for fiber optics, is that only the design process of your figure would not see it through to fruition, would it?
No, soup to nuts, from, it's from the beginning to end.
From beginning to end.
So we would work with you to get the, exactly what you said in the beginning. Get that price of what you'd be paying out the door. But in order to do that, and I apologize for you jumping ahead, but on item 28, we talked about IT consulting. There would have to be either Jeff, your existing person, if we're in concert with them, or we would have to come in and really understand what you need, understand what you need today, and probably at least a five-year outlook on any cloud-based technologies or softwares you use. Because those software, when all, each user, and I, I use the word user, not the device, because a user can be a laptop, a user can be a smartphone, one user can have three devices potentially. So we have to assess that need and then build the, build the product on that infrastructure around that need. So we would start in the beginning by gauging, when we establish your need, the pricing for that need, and lets you look at what your costs would be going forward from today to tomorrow. And then if everything was good from there, then within that cost, we would, we would be a part of that implementation with AT&amp;T and create milestones from their side that they can live with, and then hold them to that. And then when the services are installed, we'd help with the transition. So from beginning to end, I'm not gonna come back to you another 22 to plug it in. I guess it's the simplest way.
That, that's, that's what I was concerned about. In other words, if that gets us from where we are today, which is at ground zero, to hello, I'm on the new system, you know, that seems like a relatively nominal figure for what might be a good deal. But I still believe we need some sort of comparison to, to know, to make a rational decision. I mean, I'm not questioning that $3,300 isn't a good deal, I don't know. But on top of that, we still will have reoccurring charges. And as we have reoccurring charges today, and without those figures, it's pretty hard for me to make a decision to do anything.
Well, is, is it going to harm us in any way if we put this decision off?
I don't have to go harmlessly.
Until two weeks from now, we may owe another V, or it may not be exactly two weeks, but similar. Go ahead.
During that time, Luanne, and I realize this is a tight time of year for your office, but would it be any possibility that we could come up with a figure for the five county offices in terms of what our current telephone bill is, either annually or monthly? Probably annually better.
Normally, your monthly charge ranges in, on an average of $60 per line, right now.
How many lines do we have?
See, that's, I mean, if we have, if we have a lump sum figure, you know, on an annual basis, whatever is the easiest, that would tell us our starting point.
But technically, not really, because we're still going to have those charges. This is just gonna be how our phone system goes. Instead of being on the cable line as it, or the copper line as it is now, it will be on fiber optic. We're still gonna have monthly phones on us.
Oh, I know, I know, but what I'm, what, what I'm saying is, are those charges different on fiber optics than they are?
They, they couldn't.
See, that are, are, where it's then based on how much you use, that we only would have one-half of the equation from the figures that I'm more or less requesting from Luanne. That would give us where we are right now. Then we would have to look at what you're proposing, plus whatever AT&amp;T tells us they're gonna charge us based on that proposal, to see whether it's viable. Now, I, you know, again, I'm, what little I know is of fiber optics from the standpoint of all the technology is important. It is good, but it's still an economic decision.
Absolutely. And just to do a what-if, and this, this is a big what-if, you have copper trunks or lines coming into your phone systems today. You're probably paying for the metro traffic to go back and forth without people incurring the LD cost for calling you. But you are carrying that LD cost on a monthly basis, and it probably fluctuates, but within a certain window, like Luanne was saying. If you opt to look at the opportunity to do SIP service, your LD costs go away and your costs are stabilized. That's one simple, and there is some implications on your hardware as to whether it's SIP ready or SIP prepared, because I don't know your Via hardware, but yeah, but either here or there. But that's an example of a, a cost benefit, I guess. If you look at it long-term, what does the county spend the last 10 years, just, just LD, nothing else, just LD? I can eliminate that cost with some of these fiber providers.
LD in the long distance?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, yes. I use a lot of acronyms, just kicking me in the head. If I say that again, I'll, I'll say the right words.
I just wanna make sure.
Mr. Underbrink, you're from Carpus, does your office have fiber optics?
Yeah, matter of fact, we, we have several providers that we can use. And we're making a change over the last, now we have an IT guy in our office, similar to what y'all have. We're doing a 30-day overlap, so that we can make sure that one gears up all the way.
Have seamless service, more or less.
Across seamless, right. Yeah, so we're doing something similar. I mean, you guys just need to decide if you want to investigate an upgrade right now. He did mention the fact that you could do a land, a local area network that connects everybody with fiber. We're doing the same thing, because we're actually in two different buildings. We have a fiber optic line that runs between the two buildings, similar to what y'all are talking about.
Well, I mean, I know your, your situation would transfer a lot of data.
Yeah, we do, we share a lot of data off of the single server that's in the main.
Okay, thank you. I, I would move that we put Art back on for the next regular meeting. And in the meantime, that if our very, get the right name word here, ABEL auditor would get us an annual figure on our telephone calls, we could look at it again.
Absolutely, no problem. And I think my item 28 correlates to all of this, because they all, they all touch. The IT offering I was, the talk of Commissioner Jauer about was to be precise on what I'd recommend with AT&amp;T. And it would be dangerous to not do that deep dive with somebody. Maybe I'm not, you know, like y'all said, you could vet this business out RFP, but I would definitely have a vendor come in and assess and understand all your bandwidth needs with all your IT products today and tomorrow. I would encourage the commissioners to almost get a five-year outlook from that bandwidth spin, so that you size it right. You can always go bigger, commissioners, as far as your pipe, right? So if you only need 20 meg, I'm just making numbers up, and you think you might need a 15 meg? Well, just wait on it till you need it. But we want to at least hit the minimum today's specifications, and that's that deep dive's enough.
That's good, I think.
I'm gonna have the first computer ever box, guys, that 20 meg's all you'll ever need, all you'll ever need.
So, so we will postpone any further action or discussion on this until our next meeting and put it back on the agenda for them.
If we don't forget that.
Okay.
Well, I will just go on...
There's no action, okay.
I'll just go on record and say, we do need to do something to upgrade the systems, because it precludes optimal operations of a lot of software.
It does.
Mine on the top of the list.
Which we're better off with that, start with. Which we're better off with that, start with.
I'll comment that there are four departments, Carol, the one, Brenda, and Herb in here, who have all expressed that they think fiber optic is easy.
As long as there's somebody else that's paying for them, or even paying for fiber optic person.
So I think it should be addressed soon, so.
Some call some comparison would be good, and if you can do anything to bring the new side of it to us, it would be, make a lot of sense based, to compare with the figures that she's doing.
It would just be incredibly difficult to do that without doing the IT deep dive. I would purely guess, and so I could say, well, this site shouldn't use more than ten, and I may get in there and learn something completely different and double your budget of it, so I would hate to do that.
I understand.
It would be.
You would be doing this a dis.
I would, I would. I'd be wasting your time.
You really would not be welcome back.
All right, well, we're gonna postpone any further action.
I think on everything through twenty-eight.
Take the one, two, twenty-eight.
Thank you very much. So we're on item twenty-eight?
Nine.
Nine. Acknowledged judicial appointment of Carons County Auditor and Assistant Auditors, District Clerk Denise Rodriguez to testify.
Yes, and in your packet, you should have a copy of the order.
These are the orders.
There are three.
What?
There are three separate orders, Judge.
I don't know if we go, I don't know.
We have.
Stamp and seal.
The front page is like this.
There's two of them for Michelle Salas, there are two for Sheriff Kate Warver.
Yes.
And there's one for, or two for Lawana S. Castor.
Actually, there's three pages for each appointment. And their file stamped is already recorded in the district court records.
Yes, I, Ms. Rodriguez, clerk of the District Court of Carons County, Texas, do hereby certify that the within and foregoing is a true and correct copy of the original order appointing an auditor, first assistant auditor and assistant auditor for Carons County, Texas, now in file in said court, given under my hand an official sale of said court in Carons City, Texas, the sixteenth day of July, two thousand and fifteen.
I think Judge Wilson didn't have to sign.
He signed it on the second page. That's why there's three pages.
Oh, I got you, I got you.
I'm surprised it wasn't filed in the criminal court minutes.
That's the way it is acknowledged, right?
That's correct.
That's we acknowledge. You're here for another couple of years, huh?
Yes, sir.
Well, we got the food bank out of the way.
Yep.
All right, does that put us to four?
Thirty-one.
Discuss approved the court payment car and processing participation agreement proposed by Tyler Technologies, in part as part of implementation of E-file Texas in Carons County's pursuit to electronic filing agreement entered through Texas Office of Court Administration, OCA, and Tyler Technologies offered by Herb Hancock, Carons County Attorney and Nicole Fenner, Carons County Deputy District Clerk, and E-file Texas Project Manager. Take off.
Judge, this is Ms. Fenner, Ms. Nicole Fenner, that's, you met yesterday.
We've not heard longer than you've been here. I'm not being smart, David, I didn't mean to slip that. I probably wouldn't be upon that.
You're getting soft, Judge. This is a project, it's a contract that doesn't cost the county any money, it's a contract that is just an extension of the state contract that's already been signed. The company is Tyler Technology, is for the purpose of transmitting documents from, filing documents in the district court at this time. Are we doing county court duty?
Just civil, just civil.
Just civil?
Yes, sir, civil and probates, yes.
For, for the county and district court. Tyler is a vehicle that is used to move documents from the lawyer's hands to the district and the county's court. It does not change the filing process, it does not change any way the documents are stored in the district or the county clerk's office, is that a fair statement, Judge? At this point, other than they can be stored on an electronic base in both locations, and that's what Tyler's doing at this point, is that correct? Tyler does not act as a storing agent, the district clerk and the county clerk's office does the storing, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Am I correct in that this does not cost the county any money?
Yes, across this assessment, the filer, the budget attorney.
It's a process whereby lawyers or individuals can file documents from anywhere in the state of Texas, and there's a process set up for the payment of those fees that are assessed against the lawyer for the filing of the documents. So it just gives the lawyer the access to the courts without actually physically being pressed. This is mandated by, what, June two thousand and sixteen? We are the last, because we're a small county, we're the last ones that will be on board. The bigger counties have been doing this for over a year, and with quite a success. It is a wave of the future, unfortunately, I'm not caught up yet, but I expect that either I get caught up or get run over one or two. I recommend that the contract be signed, I've looked at it, it is a contract that's had been approved by other counties of similar jurisdiction inside. I'll ask you any question I can about the contract that you need to.
So any fees generated, excuse me, any fees generated by this are processed by credit card only?
That's the only way that you can do it, because the, say, for example, somebody in Austin wants to file a civil case in the district court here in Carons County, they have to have a credit card that they can process. And Tyler does the processing of the credit card and transmitting the funds to the clerk, to the auditor's office on a weekly basis.
And if the filing fee, say it was two hundred and fifty dollars, they put their fee on top of that?
Yes, and that's charged at the portal, that is, when the lawyer slaps the card, he pays those fees, and he pays Tyler's fee at that time. So there's not any change in the filing system, other than it just is a convenience to a filer in Tyler, Texas, or a filer in San Antonio, Texas, or Corpus Christi, for example. Is that, am I saying basically?
Yes, sir.
I told you, I messed up, you.
You missed a lot.
I saw her try to kick something, I couldn't tell what.
Well, I, when they told me I needed to do this, I said, you're taking yourself at your own risk. I have nothing else, I recommend that we accept the contract, and that the judge sign the contract.
There's no part of the filing fee that the county loses in any way by using this system?
No. There are some additional fees, but those are fees that are used by the processor, Tyler Technology, they attach a fee to it.
That's not paid by our county.
That's not paid by our county.
Is this similar to the system that the tax office uses? I mean, it's probably not Tyler, but, you know, if you go in and pay with a credit card there, it tells you you're being assessed a three-dollar fee or whatever, something like that.
I think that's about.
That more or less right.
The JP office does the same thing, I believe Carol's office, they are charged a fee for the use of the credit card. Some gas companies charge extra for using a credit card to buy gasoline, those are the kind of things. But Tyler is the individual who collects the money for this accounting, and who transmits the money to the, electronically, to the, I believe there's an account set up in one for that purpose, that's already in existence, and the funds would just go to that account.
Having had some.
Some of the last pages, the last page you have to think, processing fees, two point eight nine percent will be assessed, and a twenty-dollar fee shall be assessed, recharged by transaction, so.
Yep.
There's some stuff in here about some fees.
That goes to the filer, whoever's filing it, they're assessed those fees. Whichever attorney is filing, the county will not, but if it's an attorney filing a civil case, they will get those fees charged to them. That's not to the.
And it's attached to the credit card at the time it's filed.
If the Tyler program is good, I remember early on, there was some issues with some of the products that settled the county, I take it, that this is not one that creates any problems?
This is one that they're using statewide, and I can tell you it works in Harris County and Maric County and Dallas County, and if it'll work in those jurisdictions, it should work in this one.
I just, let's go ahead.
I'm with you, go ahead and prove the court payment card process, and participate the agreement proposed by Tyler Technologies as part of the implementation of E-file Texas and Carons County Pursuiting Electronic Filing Agreement entered into by the Texas Office of Court Administration, OCA, and Tyler Technologies, as recommended by Herb Hancock, County Attorney, and Nicole Fenner, Carons County Deputy District, and E-file Texas Project Manager.
Second.
Why would the district, the deputy district clerk recommend it rather than the district clerk who's sitting in here?
I would recommend it also.
Well, those are the things that come to my mind, but.
Because Denise has designated her as the E-file project manager.
Well, I understand that, but I just wonder why she didn't take to it herself?
Get more mileage out of the employees.
Okay, all right. Okay, we, I don't even know where we are, we've got a motion, and any discussion? All in favor of the motions signify everybody in your right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Judge, can I give you the contracts?
Yeah, but I can't guarantee that you'll ever get them back.
I'll sign them, I mean, I can buy them. Thank you so much. We need to file them with the D.
Well, just give it to Herb when I sign.
Yes, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Thank you, Judge, thank you.
Thank you, Herb.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Where are we now?
Thirty-two.
I've lost my place in my mess.
Thirty-two?
Take your word.
With this, what do you got about the county's Carons County Jail, one state headed as a record storage facility, or the back?
Carol, please.
Yes, I mentioned this before, that once the sheriff's office and the jail moves out of the old jail into the new one, if we could designate that building as the record storage facility, I was gone for a week, but I had left a phone message for Sharon Fleming, who is the, with the Texas Historical Commission, and then she did call back, and I'd asked if it would be okay for her to call Lawana and visit with Lawana, and I believe she said that that would be okay with the Historical Commission to use that building rather than tear it down, that we could utilize it as record storage. And the place now that we use is really in very poor condition for record storage. Maybe it's an idea to tear that one down, and, you know, the one that it's currently in, and you maybe make a parking lot there for overflow or something.
Okay.
Will we have to do an assessment, what do we take to, might convert, even convert the cells, like take the bars out, or do the bars in?
I think if you just take the doors off, I mean, I don't think we need the doors on there, you think you can leave everything as is, as the way it is now, as long as there's no leaks or anything, but all we have to do is meet the requirements that are set down by the Texas State Library and Archives for storage, and that is that the records have to be off the floor, they don't need to be, you know, mixed with any kind of flammable liquids or anything like that, and I'll check into that, but I don't think we have to do much to it, other than have it be a locked facility and climate controlled.
It's lockable and climate controlled.
We've had some discussion about keeping the jail at a historical part of the county, and that would nearly ruin it for people to be able to go through and look at it, it seems to me.
True, it would.
And I don't know whether that makes any difference to anybody, I don't know whether it makes any difference to me, but I'm just, we need to think about it, and make sure.
And would that be something to visit with the local Texas Historical Society about? Or to have them?
It probably would be a good idea, it seems to me, maybe with Sue or somebody else, at least with her, if I were looking for something that the hystericals were involved in, I would talk to her first, and go from there, there are others involved also. But I don't have any objection at all, other than the fact that if we were gonna store stuff in there, how, how we had to go about it, and what other use we could make of it if we could be known.
Well, I know during our meeting this last week with the courthouse restoration committee, the subject was talked about in depth, and after I left, I believe they walked over and looked at it, and there's actually the south side, south end of the jail that currently has some offices in it that might be able to be utilized for some office space. I know the suggestion was made, maybe for the VSO or the EMC, and then use the cell area for the actual records. I think it's going to have to, at some point, be a decision of court, because the court had previously requested the ability to demolish it from THC, and that was granted, so this would have to be action requesting that they rescind.
To rescind our previous action or something to that effect. It seems to me that members of the court ought to go there, take a look at it, it doesn't matter whether we all go at one or at one at a time, it makes the sheriff, the officers, that's the working board, we go one at a time, but take a look at it, and then do some talking about what, what use of it we think would be beneficial, and make sure that everybody agrees, or most of them.
But the talk had been about building a new record storage facility at a pretty hefty price tag, and I, if we cannot do that, I mean, I realize it's a course decision, but if we could not have to build a new facility, we will have to put some work into where they are now, if that's where the records stay. It's the, when I went over there not too long ago, the air conditioner wasn't even working, one of them wasn't, one was, so it's, it needs a lot of work, and I think you've seen it, I think Shelby's been over there.
Not the jail you're talking about.
I'm talking about where the records are, I'm still talking about record storage. It is, it is.
Well, you know, if the Historical Society does not have designs on it, I'd certainly like to see it used, we could get out of Carons Cafe, and maybe somebody would pay the. We could get out of Carnes Cafe and maybe somebody would pay the county something for it and we could put it back on the tax roll.
Maybe.
Maybe. You don't want to buy it?
I do not want to buy it. We can tear it down and put a parking lot there. We always need overflow parking.
Which we will lose in parking.
Well, we'll, we'll sell it to ABC Parking and let them charge three dollars an hour. Give us a dollar of it.
Or five dollars a day, depending on how many stay.
Okay. Do we need it? If, let's, let's go and look if the court will. Remember, the court can hire wherever you want to go. Don't worry about going with anybody, but it would be better on everybody if we could all go together, I think.
Judge, excuse me, did y'all decide what do y'all want to do? Walk through, walk through this, let us know. So we have to shift some inmates like to the other side so we can go all the way into the cell for you there?
Okay. Maybe, maybe we'll try to get together on a date and, and we'll discuss with you. So we'll do it at a time that's convenient, you know?
We could all get here and stagger. You may have to, to keep from hitting open meetings while two of us go through and two of us go through.
Yeah, so there won't be three of us in a bunch, which is, although we could schedule a workshop to look at it, oh, jail.
Yeah, that's good, that's a better idea.
Maybe, maybe we can do that on a date. We can talk about a date right now. I mean, we, we had some more, some more meetings scheduled for our budget business.
Well, we haven't scheduled any more meetings yet.
Well, but we already had some that we posted another some, didn't we not?
That ended yesterday. We, we have a special meeting on Tuesday for insurance bids, but we don't have any budget workshops scheduled in August yet.
Okay, not in August, they were all in July.
Correct, yeah.
You're right.
So you said something about wanting to meet next Friday after I have the tax rate? I know you mentioned that the other day.
Well, I won't have insurance rates until the eleventh, so there really won't be true numbers to be looking at until sometime after the eleventh.
Okay, okay.
When day of the week is the eleventh, though?
Tuesday.
Well, it'll be a regular board meeting day that we can take a run at. Maybe go.
Okay. Add that as an agenda item.
Can't put it on, visit jail. Visit.
Just to visualize ourselves with.
Justin base.
All right, anything else?
Not on that.
Have we got the treasurer's report to look at? I haven't seen it.
You had something included in your packet that looks like that to begin with.
I didn't see it.
Yay.
Oh, there it is, yay. This, this is the treasurer's report?
Yep.
For three months.
April, May, June.
I'm not sure what that has to do with us. I don't think you can read that and apply it to our deal particularly. And there are many laypeople that think that because it says one word that it means something and it doesn't. But we'll look at it and talk about it next meeting. We don't have anything about it today. That's not a treasurer's report in my estimation. But since we don't have one, or if we do, you said we have one, don't?
They're behind that.
Yeah. Does anybody have any comments about what we have?
For the investments you want, you can verify the investment.
I haven't verified what was in, sitting on this table when I got here. I have not received it prior to this meeting.
Okay.
And I don't, I assume these were delivered here. They weren't delivered to me. And my secretary prepared these notebooks. In fact, I stayed here last night till seven o'clock with her to get all of this finished, mostly because I didn't want her to be sitting here by herself. And I wouldn't very much help, but I fought off the bad guys.
Very good.
You know, I liked them, I liked them to comment on this little first page that, the email from the tax, Bill Hilton, whoever Bill Hilton is, no, that's from McClintock, Texas.
Right, this is from the treasurer's, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. But again, nobody's saying anything about any other office dis- distributing, dispersing funds. All we're doing is moving the way the funds are being.
Processed.
Processed or, you know, all the information gathered together. I guess they still, they still don't understand that. And still, I think is, I would not think a county size, a Carnes County, would need a separate HR department bill. Well, maybe he's never been to Carnes County.
Well, I tend to say that there is some credibility to that statement. A separate HR department could be utilized within the county if payroll processing is assigned to that department. If it's just for insurance, et cetera, I don't think that's a necessity. But I also don't necessarily think it's a two-person office. And I know earlier in the meeting, it was decided that a different salary range to be talked about. I wouldn't think that the salary range for that position should be higher than that of the countywide elected officials that had previously been discussed during budget workshop for the county clerk, district clerk, tax assessor and treasurer. I would think that would be the maximum salary.
It's, it's in that range, forty-five to fifty-five. So we're, we're on the low end of the target if you went with that, and that's fine. What, what is, what's left unsaid is the un-underlying parts of this, you know? Turn the thing on. However, this does not preclude the county auditor's office from preparing the documents necessary to deposit, disperse, pay or apply county funds, subject to the county treasurer's approval, just to the county auditor prepares payroll checks, subject to the county treasurer's approval. So basically, that answers what we've been going through, just what Shelby said and everything else is, you know, anybody can do it. She got to sign the check and pay it.
Correct, we both signed the checks.
I gave her one of the things this morning that I got from the, off of, from another county, Ector County, it was with HR that has done this since nineteen ninety-three. So it's nothing new.
Do you have, do you have any comments on this, any of this?
I just got it this morning. I haven't had a chance to look at it, so no, I have no comment.
Did I get, I got one yesterday.
Yes. If you turn to page eleven, I will point out items of interest. About midway down the page is a payment of twenty-five thousand dollars. That's to the Child Advocacy Center in, based out of Wilson County, that we participated in their funding. Third item from the bottom is juvenile detention for this month, fourteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty cents for a month.
That's our murderers in it?
Yes, it is.
Those two?
How long is that going to stay with us, for goodness sake?
Go all the time, probably.
Judge Ray indicated the other day, I think, that the next hearing would not be until sometime in September.
They're preparing a judge to certify those two young men as adults.
As adults, and then that's going to create a new problem, new setup problem.
If that certification takes place next month, as you're planning that, that bill may stop.
I was going to say they get kicked over in the adult population.
That's correct, depending on how the judge sets that up, but there's a good possibility that could be in next month.
He turned to page twelve. About a third of the way down, you'll see a payment for the EMS facility this cycle, ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-five cents. A payment, the description is acquisitions of property. That five hundred and twenty-eight dollars is for legal fees in reference to the four oh eight East Wall property acquisition.
Wait, wait, I didn't understand which one you were talking about.
Five hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And that's for legal fees that had been incurred during the attempted acquisition of four oh eight East Wall, which now the offer has expired. And according to Jeff, no further offers are going to be offered. The next one is twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars and ten cents for courthouse restoration. The next one is thirteen hundred and twenty dollars on the jail.
What is that payment for particularly? Is there any, the twenty-nine left?
That is, I believe, just a second, I'll confirm. That is to Fisher and Heck on.
Okay.
Additional drawings.
Okay.
Working on the finalized architectural plans. The final item on page twelve is three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars for prisoner detention from the sheriff's department. On page.
That's probably those juveniles.
No, that would be adults out of the sheriff's department.
We talked about this once with the sheriff's department. How many city prisoners do you all have from Kennedy or Carnes City? Any, many?
Like we, there are unfelony charges, probably about eight from Kennedy and probably another three from.
And, and they're unfelony charges, not misdemeanors?
Some are misdemeanors.
I was going to say, what can we do to, I know this has been discussed before, but to put a fire under the city and get them adjudicated and done, so.
Commissioner, really, it's, it's the courts, your, your county court and your district court. Even though the city of Carnes City, the city of Kennedy arrested the individual and it was a city arrest, it's, it's, it's a county or a district court.
Case.
Case.
Okay, it does not go to municipal court?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Now, they do have some that come in from municipal, those are class C's, but usually they're, they're out by the next day.
We monitor those, Mr.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
If you go to page thirteen, you'll see a payment for seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty cents. That is equipping a twenty-fifteen Tahoe. Then a little further down, you'll see a payment for the mobile food pantry of nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and eight cents. Now we're getting into road and bridge expenditures, road materials purchased this cycle, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty-six cents. Contractors and equipment utilized this cycle, two hundred and ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-seven cents. Seventh item from the bottom of the page is expenditures for Senate Bill seventeen forty-seven that we will receive reimbursement home once that's applied for, a hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-two cents.
Will we get reimbursement for the whole amount?
No. Not the.
Ninety percent.
Ninety percent?
Ninety percent, yes.
Okay.
The next item is miscellaneous in road and bridge, ten thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and seventy-five cents of that legal fees, nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six, which involves Jeff Chapman and contract review and procedures for procurement. And then you'll also see a payment of eleven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for contracted road repairs. The grand total for this bill cycle, one million, seventy-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and forty-three cents.
The stuff like this stallion, you know, these trailers and stuff, do we submit that to TAC or?
Correct. We have to pay it upfront then go reimburse.
And then they submit.
Correct. And we have started a folder that I'm sure will grow in size for that insurance claim.
We're still waiting on reimbursement phase one?
Yes. I have received an email from Tanya the other day. She wants me to present differently the manner that it was submitted. Combining phase one and then phase one A or all the dollar amounts. She's approaching it differently.
Mr. Hancock, comment on the courthouse stuff, as long as that was brought up with the stallion trailers. At the TAC, what's TAC up to? Anything have they done anymore or what's?
We sent the plans to the engineer. He kind of, maybe, I've not heard anything since that time. We overnighted the plan. The person who told I was going to take care of the building did two sets and I've got that I know Carol will be able to love me when I give it to her, but we need to file it with the court. But we got, we got to take the plan to the R.
Thank you.
I have one question from Robin. He said, after those juveniles were certified as adults, that meaning they go into adult cell?
Absolutely. If the judge orders that, Commissioner, absolutely, they'll be converted over to the adult system. So they could be housed in G O or wherever we chose to do it.
That's up to the judge, I think. It's up, it's up to the judge.
Precautions.
If the judge doesn't fire them, they'll remain in juvenile detention. So it depends on what the order will say, whatever the judge orders. But they could say they're served on as adult, illegal, be in juvenile detention, but normally they don't. In most circumstances, if they are certified as adult, they go into the adult system.
Are they, are they sixteen or how old are they? Is that legitimate to ask?
Yes, they are. I think one of them turned seventeen here with the minimum, but anyway, yes, that is your question, yes.
I made a motion to pay the bill.
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand of the motion to pay the bills. All opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Move with your jar. Second.
All of y'all have to approve the bills.
Okay.
So today is seven thirty-one. I am silent.
I observe my standing.
God, what am I supposed to do with this, sir?
Yeah.
Is that yours? She got it. Are they yours? Do you want them back?